Good evening. We will now call to order this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority. Today is June 8, 2015. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson?
President.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner McCoyd?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Sorry. Thank you, Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Benards?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Chair Nanki?
Here. With that, if you would please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Screamer hot day outside, not too bad in here. Cool heads all night long, I'm sure. There'll be a couple of items that are -- people are passionate about tonight, not necessarily during the Housing Authority portion of the meeting. But with that, I would -- we did have one member of the public sign up to speak.
Yes, my name is Mark Knack and I reside at 1835 Beach Avenue and I'm on the Salem Housing Advisory Commission Board. And we have a very substantial shortage of low-income housing in this community. And I know the mayor and some of you are working on trying to do some things along that line. And up in Portland, for an example, they are just being priced out of -- the lower-income people up there are just being priced out of their low-income -- well, you know, their low-income housing is just disappearing up there in Portland, but that's up there. This is down here, but nevertheless. And they put out a book, next time I come down to a city council meeting, I'll bring you -- it's called Portland Street Roots or something like that. They put those out every year up there. And I've got a couple -- and I've got a few extra copies at home and I'll bring you one down so you can have one to see what they're like. Maybe Salem should do something along that line at some point. But we -- but, you know, these condominiums that you build around here, here, right down the street here, here, that's fine and well, but we need the low-income housing, people on just barely making a minimum wage, you know. And the price of groceries keeps going up and price of food keeps going up. I mean, you know, it's just a never-ending battle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, yeah, we will be discussing a housing needs analysis coming up fairly soon as well, so we'd encourage you to attend during that meeting. We'll see what we have for affordable housing needs inside of the community as well, but we know it's getting tougher.
I worked with Andy over here on -- so he's done an outstanding job over there being chief.
Yes, he has it, and we know that we just keep getting less money from the federal government, so it makes our job more difficult to maintain those programs here as well. So, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. You're welcome.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benards, seconded by Dickey, not Nanki. Any discussion from Housing Authority members? Seeing none, Director Welch, any comments? I know we have an event coming up here in the next couple of weeks as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Two quick comments. One is on the -- each of you, each of the commissioners have received an electronic invitation. The city managers received one and the city council -- or city attorneys received one, so we'd love to see everybody out, if possible, and I know everybody has busy schedules, but the second thing that you hinted to was about the federal funds, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission in the program management report. Still a lot of preliminary numbers, and the most recent action was the House Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Subcommittee decision, which is not binding per se. And the House is supposedly meeting this next week and the Senate has no scheduled time yet, so it's still preliminary, but the numbers look not too great, a little less than next -- last year, even though the data says that there's been an increase. If you're serving 110 percent next year, then you might have the same amount of money, but you're serving 10 percent more clients, and so the money doesn't go quite as far. And that's one of the things that I wanted to communicate in here. It talks a little bit about the demands are up, the resources per client are going to be down, and that's really where the risk comes for the providing enough housing and support.
So it actually is the demand portion that we would need to provide more services at similar funding, so it would be less on a per-case basis.
That's correct.
Versus same amount of money, same amount of people, but we come with a several billion-dollar shortfall, and -- because I had asked about that earlier as well.
So, so often, the news will say that the funds are constant. Well, they may be constant and equal to what happened last year, but the reality is HUD has been layering additional needs, for instance, veterans. We serve a lot of veterans, but there's no new monies for the veterans, right? It just kind of comes out of the same voucher pot. So that's one of the things that creates a smaller bit of resources, smaller bit of resources per client.
Okay. Excellent additional information.
Thank you.
Explains a lot of what I was trying to figure out inside of that staff report, then. Excellent, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. We have no special orders of business. I may make note that we do have a new Housing Authority member that will be voting on the council agenda, and hopefully we'll see a new member with us next month.
Right.
With that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and bring up the Urban Renewal Agency presently.
I'd like to call to order this session of the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem for June 8, 2015. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoyd?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benards?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you all. And we have time for public comment? Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We do. Whoops. Oh, no. All right, thank you. We do. Under Urban Renewal Agency, we have Mark Knack. Would you like to speak, Mr. Knack?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I reside at 1835 Beach Avenue, and I know for years they have talked about finishing the -- from the interstate, state cross -- from the bridge down north, north to Portland Road in that area. When it comes time to renewal that area, what I would like to see in that area, and I have made comments about it, I would like -- I know that the city transit can't put shelters everywhere, but we do need some inbound bus shelters along that route, route, and I'd like to see that in some benches where we could at least sit down and wait for the buses.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so, and urban renewal is -- and then that railroad bridge, is that -- does that -- who does that railroad crossing underneath the bideck down there, does that belong to the city, or does it -- or who does that?
I think it belongs to the railroad.
That's correct.
Well, I thought somebody said it didn't belong to the railroad.
No, I think it does belong to the railroad.
Now, what -- now, I've heard a lot of comments down through the years, or I've heard a lot of, well, anyway, back and forth, forth, the railroad said it isn't their responsibility to replace that, they said it's the city, so what -- so which is it? I mean, I'm getting kind of confused about that, but anyway, that there are -- when you come from the south and if you look up in this corner, corner on that bridge, you can see the concrete coming out of that.
Okay.
Alaska, our Public Works Director, Peter Fernandez, will speak today.
Mayor, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Just to be clear, the bridge, the railroad trussel over Portland Road is owned by the Unipacific Railroad. The street underneath it is owned by the City of Salem.
Yeah, that's what -- so you would have to have a joint effort between them and the railroad to fix that, then? Is that what you'd have to do? And then, of course, we're on the north, and I'm on the Northgate Neighborhood Board Association, too, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also over there on Silverton Road, there's a white oak, and there's two of them over there, and there's a big branch that's hanging over like this. It's curved, and one of these times, both of those big trees are going to go in a storm.
Okay.
But they can't take them down because they're protected, but I'm, you know, one of these times, there's going to be an accident.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate you alerting us to that. Thank you very much. All right. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak during this public comment session for the Urban Renewal Agency? All right. We will move now to the consent calendar. Member Nanki, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I would move the consent calendar with the following poll, 4.3A by Board Member Bennett.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Nanki and seconded by -- excuse me, seconded by Member Benards to approve the consent calendar with the item 4.38 polled. Thank you. Is there discussion? All right, all favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I direct your information, due to information reports that are -- there are two of them in a packet, and then, under Special Orders of Business, we will deal with the item that's polled, 4.3A. Member Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation on 4.3A.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey to move the staff recommendation on item 4.3A, having to do with a grant agreement. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is the grant agreement for construction of the intersection improvements at Commercial and Union. It's a really major undertaking and one really pleased to see on the agenda and being moved forward. It also is 3.3G on the council agenda tonight, so it's sort of moving through the process this evening. It will allow us to have -- to use urban renewal funds, about a half million dollars, as a recall, to develop that intersection, particularly a major street light at that intersection of Commercial and Union. I want to also just reference at this point, item 3.3E on the council agenda, which deals with the Maple Winter Street Bicycle Family Friendly Bike Way. That is another part of a -- of, I think, in some ways, the same direction the city is taking. This is to allow the city to apply for grant dollars and develop a family-friendly, or -- and they're referred to in a number of different ways, Bike Boulevard, really stretching from Highland down to the Capitol. And I'm just really pleased to see this package of proposals come in front of the Urban Renewal Agency and the council tonight. I want to compliment the public work staff for really pulling this together, and certainly that Winter Street, Maple Winter Street project, you've moved very fast on that, and I just think that's great. Really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. I see you count Member Anderson's hand and then Member Dickey. Member Anderson?
Thank you, I support this, too, and I point out that, you know, the intersection there, Union and Commercial, is a direct conduit for the Union Street Bridge, which is a way to get across the river, either by pedestrian use or bicycle use, and I think that's very crucial because you come across the river from West Salem on your bike and you're stuck on front, or you're stuck on maneuvering your way across the Commercial Street problem. And so I think this is terrific, and I think it will really move forward the whole idea of Bike Boulevards, and, you know, I think it's more than just good for families and bike-friendliness. I think it's good for transportation connectivity of all kinds, and if we make it easier for people to move through the city core, and from the outskirts of the city core to the city core, I think that will encourage more use of bicycle transportation and more than just get out and ride with the family on Saturday or Sunday. Thanks.
Great. Member Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to go on the field trip with the Bicycle Boulevard group a couple weeks ago up to Portland and ride around for about 10 miles around some neighborhoods in Portland and experience what Bicycle Boulevards or family-friendly bikeways, or whatever you want to call it, are. And I think the thing I came away with after doing that was that I think I had one idea in my head of what a Bike Boulevard is, and it would be very expensive because it's a, you know, completely separated bikeway with all sorts of amenities, and really, there are a lot of different options. There are a lot of low-cost things that can be done, and so they took us through, they showed us everything from, you know, streets that had large speed bumps to just signage that alerted you to the fact that this is a family-friendly bikeway, to any number of things that helped you really to be able to feel safe, take -- I mean, there were people of all ages on this group. I mean, there was a little boy that had just been riding his bike for a couple of weeks that went on this trip, up to a very seasoned, experienced cyclist. So it was great to be able to see that, knowing that this doesn't have to be a multimillion-dollar venture to actually make some of our neighborhood -- some of our neighborhoods more friendly for families and for people who are commuting for any number of reasons, people who are riding their bikes. So that was pretty fun to see that and know that we may have some options here in Salem. And our Public Works Director, Peter Fernandez, was also there, so he got to see it as well, and Julie Warnakee, our Transportation Manager, I don't see her here tonight, but -- and so they were able to see that as well. So I know that they got to see some of the ideas, and I think that we're going to be able to, with this package of funding, I think it's going to be a great benefit for our Salem neighborhoods, and really look forward to being able to expand it afterward, do the first initial ones, and be able to expand it into other areas of the city.
Wonderful. Other comments? All right, it's time to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify yea by saying yea.
Yea.
Yea. I did it again, didn't I? I'm awfully sorry. Okay. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, there are information items, we've talked about that, and it's time now for the public hearing, having to do with the 2015-16 Salem Urban Renewal Agency budget. Do we have any staff presentation on the budget? Yes, we do. Hi, Kelly.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Peterson and council members. I'm Kelly Jacobs, the City's Budget Officer, and it's my pleasure this evening to do a very brief introduction to the public hearing for the Urban Renewal Agency budget. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee recommended a budget to the agency board on May 13, 2015. The agency board is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. In compliance with state budget law, this evening's public hearing was noticed in the State Journal on May 28, 2015. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the Urban Renewal Agency Board deliberate on the Budget Committee recommended budget and directs staff to return on June 22, 2015, with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2015-16 Urban Renewal Agency budget. At that meeting, staff may request the agency board amend the fiscal year 2015-16 budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the fiscal year 2014-15 budget, which staff are currently identifying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the public hearing is open, but I see no one has signed up. Was there anyone here this evening that wanted to speak on regard to the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency? All right. Then we close the hearing and then have questions of staff?
You can ask questions now.
All right. We'll ask questions of staff, if there are any, from councilors. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Benards?
More of a comment than a question at this point. I just want to let people know who are watching this on TV, or who are here tonight as well, why you might not have the questions coming from the council or the agency at this point. And the reason is, is the Budget Committee is comprised of the nine people that sit here at the council, as well as, I think it's six or seven people that are outside of this -- five? Nine, thank you. Nine other people that sit on this. So the agency and the council have both been through the budget and spent many, 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 many hours going through it with a fine-toothed comb.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion. I think I need -- do I need to close the hearing first? All right, the public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion regarding the budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move staff recommendation that was provided by the Budget Officer.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Nanki and seconded by Member Benards to move the public -- excuse me, to move the motion for the -- adopt the public -- excuse me, to adopt the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have our budget ready for the coming year. There is no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency, so we are adjourned. All right, I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, June 8, 2015. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Bennett?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
President.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor McCoyd?
Here.
Councilor Dickey?
Here.
Councilor Benjamin?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you very much. Our first item is to deal with approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Councilor Nanki, do I have a motion from you, please?
Oh, yes, you do. I would move additions and deletions, as included in two handout sets of materials on your desktops this evening.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Benards to move the additions to the agenda this evening. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, just to identify those items, we actually have a supplemental report on 3.3A, which is a Salem Art Association agreement, and then we have written testimony on a multitude of items, the Transportation and Growth Management Program, application for the Winter Maple Bike Way Plan that was discussed during the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, on 3.3F regarding an urban tree commission. There were several emails and communications that came in, and then, for our public hearings on the smoking ordinance, as well as the removing the exemptions to time limits in meter parking, written testimony on both of those, as well as on the counselor item regarding the State Hospital North Campus property. And I think that covers it all, because that's just more written testimony.
Very well done. All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding these additions and deletion? Councilor Benards?
Again, in trying to be clear on everything, if the public wants to go see, and there's quite a packet of additions for tonight's meeting, just go to the agenda page on the cityofsalem.net website, onto the right-hand side, it'll show you the tab to hit for additions and deletions, so that you can see exactly what we see at every meeting.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of accepting the approval of additions and deletions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. It's now time for council and city manager comment. Do councilors have any comments this evening? Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I attended the Japan America Society of Oregon meeting up in Portland. It was a wonderfully attended event. Councilors Lewis and myself, interim Urban Renewal Director Bechtel, and interim City Manager Duncan were in attendance as well, as well as a lot of familiar faces, some ex-employees of the City of Salem were there as well, who are now with other municipalities. Wonderful event, their new chairman is truly a card. And then we, at our table, were also joined with the CEO of Yamasa here in town and the Senior Director of Admin and Finance for Panasonic.
Wonderful. Sounds like a great dinner. I'm sorry I missed that.
Some good drumming on the up front, too.
All right.
Like, girls with big arms.
Okay. Oh, the tyco drummers.
Yeah.
The tyco drummers, I get it.
It's like--
Okay, lovely. All right. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. On Saturday, I had the honor of participating in the dedication of the new Crooked House Playground at Bush's Pasture Park, and Councilor Benards was there as well. It's a wonderful cooperation among the city, the SCAN Neighborhood Group, and Parks Foundation, and they raised a lot of money and a lot of effort, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful playground. Every time I ride my bike past there, even in the rain, there are people out there playing, and it's a wonderful playground, and I urge everybody who has children and grandchildren to get them over there and enjoy the playground. Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Were there other counselor comments? All right, thank you very much. Do we have a comment from the city manager?
Yes, I will just mention that this Thursday, from 10 to -- excuse me, 10:30 to 2:00 p.m., is Public Works Day at Riverfront Park. That's one of our favorite kickoff-the-summer events, and it's always well-attended. I believe they usually supply a hot dog. In addition, you'll get to learn more about how the services of Public Works touch you each and every day, so please be sure to attend that on Thursday, Riverfront Park, from 10:30 to 2:00 p.m.
Great, wonderful. Okay. It's time for public comment for items on the agenda. Let's see if we have people signed up, and we do. All right, we'll start with Jaclyn Shindell, followed by Sarah Fisher Rice. Or Sarah Fisher Rice, it might be. Jaclyn, welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm Jaclyn Shindell. I live at 970 15th Street, northeast Salem, and I am a member of the Nen Board. I would like to speak in regards to the Street Tree Commission versus committee versus nothing, and I strongly support the idea of the commission. To have the final word with the fate of trees in regards to the Public Works Department is to do a grave injustice to our tree canopy and our tax-paying citizens. A urban tree commission would be made up of volunteers, and as you know, Salem has a great volunteer involvement. You, the mayor, all the councilors, are all volunteers, so we get high quality of volunteers in the city. For instance, the current committee of street tree people are made up of arborists, tree people, and lawyers, and people, master gardeners, who actually know something about trees. With all regards to the Public Works Department, I don't think they have the expertise. Trees have diseases and lifespans, but they're much more-- Trees have diseases and lifespans, but they're much more than shade and beauty. A lot of people don't realize they also affect our sidewalks and water and sewer lines. This, to me, is where Public Works should come into the equation. I've recently had conversations with the NEN Board, Bruce Hildebrand of sidewalks, and Jan, our urban forester, in regards to street trees and sidewalks. There are terrible sidewalks throughout the city, and I know of several people, myself included, that have broken several ribs and compressed several discs. Myself, this last August, three ribs, three discs. These are due to sidewalk lifting from ill-planted right-of-way trees. With a commission that allows public testimony in the decision-making process, the public would become more informed and educated, and the frustrations a great many of the public feel with our Public Works Department would be greatly lessened. Let the new commission of volunteers make the decisions in regard to the trees and have the Public Works Department enforce these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Shindell? All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Sarah Rice, followed by Brian Hines.
Hi, I'm Mayor Peterson and councilors. My name is Sarah Fischler Rice. You were really close earlier.
Was I? Okay, good.
Really close, yeah. I'm here representing Salem Bike Boulevard advocates, and I would like to speak for all those citizens who want to feel safe and comfortable as they walk and bike in their Salem neighborhoods. We're pleased to see the city's application for the ODOT-TGM grants and feel confident that this is a first step in transforming Salem's proposed family-friendly bikeways into an actual friendly reality. We wanted to thank the city council for the vote of approval and consent for this application, and we look forward to continuing our efforts to make our city great. And Mayor Peterson, we just wanted to present you with a signed petition of additional citizens who are in support of-- Thanks.
Wonderful.
The bikeways. Thanks.
Good. I know that Peter Fernandez, head of Public Works, is happy to have that, and we'll make sure it becomes part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Were there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you for coming down tonight. Brian Hines, followed by Jane Cummins.
Well, thank you, Mayor, city councilors. I'm here both representing myself and representing Salem Community Vision, which strongly supports leaving the urban tree commission proposal as put forward by the Tree Code Citizens Advisory Committee as-is. Let the public weigh in on this at a public hearing. Don't kill it now. I heard about it for the first time, as did all citizens, on Friday when I saw it in the packet. There was no information about it in the press release issued by the City of Salem. There was nothing about it in the story in the State Department Journal about today's meeting. So only the few of us who are in the know are here pressing, as we just heard another person say, for the urban tree commission. So let's go back in time a little bit to 2013 and why I am here talking for this. It was one of the worst moments in, you know, Salem history when the five US Bank, not in Salem history, but in the tree history of Salem, when the five US Bank trees were cut down. I paid $716 to get public records and told the story in my outrage report. I had to call it outrage because so many people were outraged at what happened. You can go to USBankKillsTrees.com to get the report. What happened in brief was that the Shade Tree Committee did its work. It recommended that all five, that the five US Bank trees be saved. They were healthy. They weren't causing problems with the sidewalk. They weren't causing, they weren't diseased. They strongly, in two meetings, they recommended that Peter Fernandez, the Public Works Director, save the trees, that they be pruned, not killed. And Mr. Fernandez overruled their recommendation because he had made a back-room deal with the US Bank President, Ryan Albert, and who happened to be the incoming president of the Chamber of Commerce. And these are facts. I've asked city council members, I've asked staff to correct any facts in this report. Nobody's done so. So these are the facts. And the Tree Code people, who labored hard, and several of them are here today, to come up with a better way of doing things, realized that the problem with the City of Salem isn't the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. There's one word in that, and that is the advisory nature of it. But they came up with the right things to do, as they did with other tree recommendations that Mr. Fernandez overruled. So it needs to be a committee with some teeth. It needs to be people that listen, that take the best arborist advice, and they make informed decisions based on actual arborist evidence, not on the lobbying that took place here. Mayor, you've said that these are just decisions akin to electrical permit decisions. Well, electrical permit decisions usually don't involve, as I found here, emails to the city council lobbying Mr. Fernandez and others to approve the application of the US Bank. It was highly political. Staff of the City of Salem have acknowledged that businesses lobby the city when they want a street tree removed, and the Urban Tree Commission will be a way to avoid this from happening again. So I'm here speaking from the trees. I promised that beautiful one on the end that I would try to save it. I failed, and I'm here speaking for it now, so that no more innocent trees have to be killed in the City of Salem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Hines? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, a couple, if I could. I've only been here 15 years, but the episode in 2013, my understanding is that the process the city has used dates back much further than that. Do you have situations before that that concerned you?
This is my first jumping in to tree issues. I knew nothing before then. I have followed them since. The High Street Trees are another example of this happening, where the Shade Tree Committee recommended two of the trees be cut down. Actually, Elwood Newhouse, a well-respected certified arborist, said they're all healthy. None of them need to be removed. But again, Mr. Fernandez overruled the committee for some reason, because the business owners thought that the trees were dropping leaves on their trees. The sidewalk was fine. It's, it's, so no, I'm not aware of the history prior to 2013, only afterward.
And then my other question, and I have to admit, I haven't been reading your blogs--
Oh, no.
--since the, up until my elections--
Okay.
--last year, but I've been reading them ever since then. And I've, I've got to, I've got to say, you know it'll be the city council that will be appointing this commission, like they do the Planning Commission. So are you going to have faith in the city council appointing the members of this commission?
Well, they, they did a good job appointing the members to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. I, I do. I mean, the mayor's comment at the work session was, "We don't need commissions because city staff are, do such a great job, they never make mistakes," to which I replied in email to you yesterday, that, "Let's do away with the Planning Commission. Let's do away with all commissions if, if city staff are infallible." But obviously, they are not, and the issue of the US Bank trees showed that. I think a group of people are much, science shows, that the groups, committees, I did this in my system science days way long, where we were guessing how many, you know, beans there are in a jar. All of us were very wrong. Together, we came up with an average that was a very good decision. I think groups usually make better decisions because there's give and take, and there's, it's, it's also a public decision, whereas in these cases, the lobbying has been behind the scenes.
Yeah. One concern might be that it becomes political like maybe the Planning Commission.
Well, it's already political. It's just political behind the scenes, behind closed doors. Now we'll have the politics out in the open, which I think would be a, a great step forward. Thank you.
Mr. Hines, I'd just like to interject a couple of facts, because I certainly do welcome all sides at the podium and all views, but when erroneous information is stated, I, I know it's my job as a presiding officer to be sure to correct that record. One thing is that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is not appointed by the city council. It's selected by this, the person who heads Public Works. So we had no say in the people that were on that committee and no power over them, as you might think, to appoint or withdraw them from that commission. The other thing, issue I'd like to address is one that has to do with smearing the name of a hard-working, honest, loyal, and very bright city employee, Peter Fernandez. You may come here and take issue with his decisions, but I can't sit here and let you say that he made a back-room deal, because we don't allow any of our employees to do that.
Well, if I may respond, or--
Well, no, I'm not going to debate it with you. I'm simply going to say that at that podium, you have the right to say anything you want to about the issue, but you do not have the right to come and malign a city employee who was doing the work that he was charged to do. Thank you.
May I say--
I think there's another counselor who has a question.
Well, can I respond?
No.
I just want to say--
Thank you.
I would welcome the debate. I will debate you on CCTV, Mr. Fernandez, the State Department Journal Editorial Board, anybody. Let's talk about the facts. These are undisputed facts, and you have no right to malign me. I've asked over and over for people to correct me on any facts in this report.
I just corrected you on the, the issue at hand. Now, I'm going to defer to a counselor who has the right to now speak.
All right.
A question. As I'm listening to your testimony, it seems to me the real issue you've got is the fact that there is no appeal. Currently, it goes to--
That's a big problem.
--to Mr. Fernandez, and there's no appeal.
Right.
So would, instead of creating another commission to deal with two or three or four problems a year, would it be acceptable if there was an appeals process, but the appeals process went to a hearings officer, to give everybody their day in court, take Mr. Fernandez off the hot seat, which I'm sure he would be thankful for, and give you, or anybody else who had an issue with the decision that had been made, the right to have their day in court, bring in the experts, and have a, have a neutral arbiter make a decision that would then be the, the final decision on what happened?
Well, I think that's, that's a reasonable suggestion. I'm quite familiar with hearings officers, having been in a bunch of land use appeals. The problem is, is that they, they are, they require some expertise. They don't require an attorney, but they usually require a fee. You're in a quasi-legal setting, which is intimidating to many people. It seems better to me to have the decision made correctly the first time than to have it corrected after the fact by appealing to a hearings officer. But I, what I believe, what I'd like to recommend to you, and what I've said, and what Salem Community Vision strongly believes, is that just as you accepted the recommendations of the Police Facility Task Force as-is at your last hearing, and said, "Accepting doesn't mean that we agree with it," why not accept the recommendations of the, of the Tree Code Citizens Advisory Committee, which labored hard on finding a balanced approach, and then discuss issues like this in a public hearing and give the public a chance to weigh in? I, I don't see why you're having to make a decision now on, so to speak, killing or laying the tree commission survive, when the public is not, other than me and another person, have had a chance to weigh in on it. Your suggestion, counselor, is a, is a reasonable one. But I, I still believe that the public favors a, a tree commission and having, I would like to see that decision appealed to a hearings officer, rather than them being the final arbiter or decision-maker.
All right. Counselor Benjamin?
What's Salem Community's vision view on bike boulevards?
Oh, strongly in favor.
Yeah, so am I. But I think at some point, looking at some of that map, there's a lot of old-growth trees, if you will, that are in the public right-of-way. And when it becomes between trees and bike boulevards, what's Community Vision's standpoint on that?
Well, that, I mean, they're both wonderful. As we heard from Counselor Dickey, I, I went on the same field trip, and I, they were, the streets looked no different from any other streets. I don't think there'd be a need, unless you had a dedicated bike path, then you would need to eliminate some trees. But these are just trees that have some speed bumps and have markings in the middle and have the stop signs reversed, so you have a through path. So your concern is certainly a possible one, but I, I don't think until we got to multi-use paths, the trees would really need to be taken down.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make that--
Sure.
--distinction with the Community Vision. In some cases, I think that the, if you're going to have a, a very comparable, or a, a good bike boulevard, these trees, or these streets are so narrow, and that to expand them, to add that feature, put the bulged-out curbs and the whatnot, some trees are going to have to be moved back--
Oh, it could be, sure.
--replanted, move the sidewalks over. They're already buckling anyway. And so that's some of the things that that tree commission or whoever's going to have to decide. And I just wanted to find out what's--
Sure.
--when that comes down to it, is there going to be an outcry for the bike boulevard or outcry for the trees?
Oh, I don't think so. I think--
Okay.
--in my experience talking with people, and as I noted to you in an email, when I arrived by that on my Plug Alert Strange Up Salem Facebook page, I mean, the tree issue is the one that gets the most attention, people. Like I said, a hundred of likes, you know, hundreds of comments. People love their trees, but they, they understand when there is a need to have them removed, as we've heard. If they're causing problems with the sidewalk, then people want them removed. But if they're not, it's the no-good reason for killing trees that has irritated people so much, me included. If we understand the reason, and I have 10 acres, we plant hundreds of trees, I, I understand trees. And as I pointed out to you in the email, we have experienced with a large tree wherein our certified arborist said, "It's diseased, cut it down." I hear it's going to cost you $1,000. We got another opinion from Elwood Newhouse, and he said, "No, it's fine." So even experts can disagree, and so we need a forum where the public can, can weigh in and see this happening transparently. Then I think the public would accept any trees being cut down, when they know the certified arborist who has, subscribes to a code of ethics, has put his name on the dotted line and said, "This tree needs to go."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Hines? All right, Jane Cummins, followed by Kristen Ramstead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jane Cummins. I reside at 158 Newfield Avenue Southeast. I am here to speak on 3.3A, which is the Salem Art Association's request to the council. I'm not going to describe it because it's in your staff report, and there are other people that will talk about that, but in summary, we are making a big investment, and we need a 20-year lease. And I'm just going to point out to you several of the major reasons why we're making that investment. I serve on the board of the Salem Art Association, and I'm also on the board of the Gallery Guides. The Gallery Guides is a group that was formed in the 1960s as a volunteer group for the art association. We help in a variety of ways, setting up some of the exhibits. We sit in the, in the second-floor gallery as docents. That's our major gallery. And we also helped in hosting some of the receptions. So we're down there a lot. Anytime there is an exhibit, we are there, and we have about 30,000 people visiting those exhibits. There are currently a lot of folks who are not able to make it up to the second floor. And if any of you have been in the barn, and I think most of you have, you know how difficult it can be, if you have a bad knee, a bad hip, if you're disabled. We have people of all ages. We have families that come down where, say, a little boy can't get up to the second floor to see his sister's artwork in the youth pro, in the youth show. We have some of the disabled who are not able to make it up there. And then there are other instances. We have cases where, we have artists even, and their reception is upstairs. In part, they can't make it up, possibly. Some of the art objects themselves are very heavy, and it would be very useful to have an elevator. So this project involves a heavy investment in an elevator, and it also involves renovation of the annex, which is the building to the south, immediately south of, of Bush Barn. And the elevator would serve it as well for two, for the, a second floor. That annex needs to be renovated. There are a multitude of ideas of how it could be better used. For us, the Gallery Guides, we sponsor a lot of projects with children and families, and we would like to schedule more in that annex and workshops and summer camps. When we have, they have been very well-received, but this facility is very outdated. In addition, that facility could house an artist-in-residence a lot of the time, and a lot of the children that we, as Gallery Guides, also bring in from schools could also visit that artist-in-residence and see somebody who's actually working. We also have a high school mentorship program. Those students could very well use that annex for some of their meetings, meet the artist-in-residence. The annex could also serve for some additional office space, which is very much needed, so we don't ha, and a meeting room, so we don't have to meet in the kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Cummins? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be speaking over you as you were finishing. Are there questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. And Kristen Ramstead, followed by Sandra Burnett.
You know, even though I know each one of us here puts our pants on one leg at a time, it's still really intimidating to talk to you guys.
You do those very well.
You both like it, want to.
Well, I'm supposed to be very intimidating.
So anyway, I have worked for over 23 years as an urban forester in western Oregon, and I have administered the Tree City USA program in Oregon for several years. And also, in the interest of full disclosure, I also served on the committee that reviewed Chapter 86. While it is true that a city does not need to have a volunteer-based tree commission to maintain its Tree City USA status-- to maintain its Tree City USA status, as long as it has an urban forestry department, I'm here tonight to lend my voice in support of establishing an urban tree commission. If a city uses its tree commission well, and by that I mean by making good selections for its members, allow them a certain amount of authority to make decisions, it's like having five to 10 brains thinking through an issue, rather than just one or two. The tree commissioners in several cities in Oregon have comparable tree knowledge to the city's urban forestry staff. And those city staffs in those cities rely on their tree commissioners to fully vet a given tree issues in their discussions with stakeholders. Ultimately, city staff must be responsible for the actions the city takes for liability issues, for liability purposes. But their decisions won't have been made in a bubble. Speaking of decisions made in a bubble, a city's tree commission acting within its scope of authority granted by the city can enable a city to increase its transparency for its residents. As everyone here knows, and was just discussed, the city's recently received a lot of negative press and citizen reactions over the removal of trees. A lot of the citizen irritation comes from not understanding how the tree removal process, tree removal decisions were made by the city. If a city chooses not to have an urban tree commission, it will seem like Salem is becoming more secretive for the basis for its controversial decision-making. Tree-issue discussions may take longer with the committee, and it may take extra staff time before everyone has heard and the decision is reached. But by going through the process, everyone who cares about it knows how the decision was made, regardless of the outcome. Some people believe that tree decisions are completely based in science, or that they should or could be. With trees, often their survival is contingent on political will as much as an arborist's report. There are often multiple approaches that can be taken with a tree with different outcomes. For example, an arborist may tell you-
Excuse me, but I have to draw your attention. The red light means your time is up. Can you quickly wrap up?
I just think that, I hope, citizens will come to see that its own tree commission can truly help its urban forestry efforts, and perhaps even assist in the rebuilding of trust between the city and its residents who love trees.
Thank you. Are there questions? I see Counselor Lewis's hand is up.
Sure.
Clarification and one question. So I want to make sure, I understand, you see the value in having the expertise on a commission, as well as the expertise in the staff?
Yes.
Okay. The question is, who should have the final say?
I think ultimately, it has to be the city, because the city bears the liability issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Sandra Burnett, followed by Laura Tesler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Thank you for your attention this evening on this issue. I'm Sandra Burnett, Salem Art Association, 600 Mission Street. And the issue is the lease of the Salem Art Association. It's critically important to get an extension of that lease, because the grant that is in question is $300,000 from the Murdoch Foundation. The Murdoch Foundation has set our proposal for the renovation as solid, but they will not proceed without some long-term security in the facility. They're a nonprofit. They don't fund the building owner. So they want to see that Salem Art Association is the beneficiary of the investment. And they're looking for a 20-year lease. We have a construction budget of $903,000. If the Murdoch fully funds, we will be only $123,000 short of that target. So this is a big, single chunk in the budget. You don't get grants like this for a mid-sized arts organization in this area. Murdoch is the only one. So now, Salem Art Association has been upgrading the barn for a long time. Over 60 years ago, it operated in the house, and behind the house was a scruffy old barn that was used for park equipment. There was a fire in the barn in the early 60s, and Salem Art Association raised the funds to restore it and upgrade it over the period of time to be an art center for Salem. And ever since then, it's been upgrading the barn more and more. Every few years, there's an investment in the barn. So here's the issue. It's not ADA compliant. Our major educational and interpretive exhibitions are on the largest gallery, which are on the second floor. I'm in the building day by day, and I see the impact. This really does matter, and we need to fix it. Everyone matters, and everyone should have access to the enrichment of the arts. This is most impactful for the elderly and the disabled. The ADA issue is becoming more and more prominent, and it's lobbying more and more vociferous. The facility is owned by the community, and all sectors of the community have the right to access. And finally, I just want to point out that 85% of the funds raised for this project come from outside of Salem. So it's the construction company that won the bid, is a Salem contractor. So what we're talking about is not only an upgrade to a community asset, but also their jobs and a financial injection into the Salem economy. So I urge you to please approve the amendment on the lease to 20 years, so we can get the funding to see this job through and get the facility ADA compliant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone with questions from councilors? I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to note, would you please again repeat the amount of the budget now for the project, the total amount?
The total amount is $903,000. This is the construction phase, and it doesn't include early architect's fees. We've been on this for five years now, as some of the councilors will remember.
Right. And how much more do you need to raise?
If we get the $300,000 from Murdoch, we will then need a further $123,000 of the $903,000. So we're getting close.
Yeah, you are. Okay. Good. Any other, any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Laura Tesler. It's been a long time since I've seen you. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, you know, I'm such a stranger. So anyway, I first want to apologize, because I told everyone I would not come back here for a year, and it's only been six months.
That's all right.
So I broke my promise. So, good evening. For the record, my name is Laura Tesler. I reside in Ward Two. That's Ward in Salem. And I am the newest addition to the Salem Arts Association Board. And they asked me to come down and give a few words of support for this very worthwhile project that you see before you. I'm pretty good at the big-picture things. So right after the Great War, the war to end all wars, which was World War I, 1919, Sally Bush and a few friends sat at their kitchen table, and they created the Salem Art League. And Sally Bush was a pretty forward-thinking lady. And 96 years later, Salem Art Association has now flowered into a fully mature organization that brings top-quality art programming to Salem. For example, in the near future, a phenomenal glass exhibit is being planned, which may include works by Dale Chuhuli. And Dale Chuhuli in Salem. Usually, you have to go to Seattle to see Dale Chuhuli. And if you don't know who Dale Chuhuli is, I want you to Google right now who this person is. The art fair brings 35,000 people daily to Salem, 35,000 people a day to Salem, and has a strong economic multiplier in our community during that time. The artists are staying in hotels, they're paying top. The people are eating breakfast downtown, they're eating lunch downtown, they're having a drink, they're doing those things in our community. If construction goes according to plan, there will be even more local businesses benefiting from this association. I could go on and on, but my request is simple. Please support a motion to create a 20-year agreement that Salem Art Association can continue in its goal to make Bush Barn accessible to all. Just think, if we would have had someone come to an exhibit that lost a limb due to military service, or I had surgery on my foot, and Portland Cello Project was playing, and I couldn't go see them upstairs because I couldn't get up the stairs. So this is a really pressing goal. We should do the right thing and make it handicapped accessible to all for access art. And as always, I would like to thank Casey and Gretchen, who are just wonderful to work with, and just fine example of the talented staff that are employed here. And thank you, all of you city councils, for your service to Salem. It's much appreciated. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. It's so nice to see you here. Are there questions for Laura Tesler? It's hard not to call you Counselor Tesler. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I appreciate you signing up with the art folks for 20 years. See this through. That's really nice. Okay, so the city is used to signing one-year leases. Now you're going to have them sign a 20-year lease. So you know that's making them nervous, is anything. What else can you tell them to say, "Don't worry about it. 20 years will go by in a heartbeat, and everything will be just fine"?
Well, 96 years has gone by pretty quickly, and they're still there. And there's been a fine group of people that have been associated with Salem Art Association, and I'm a brand-new baby to this board. And so I don't have the experience to stand up here and talk to you about the many fine people that have been involved with this board. But I will tell you, it's a list of very impressive people in this community that gave their all to make this happen. And you know, any good community that's going to attract jobs, living-wage jobs, has a strong art component. And that's, you can look that up in the Economic Index. And we need that, and we have that. And I think that this 20-year agreement, I know this is a long time, but I think it's a good thing, and I think it's the best for everyone in the city.
Okay. Counselor Benares?
I don't know if I should do this to you, but you have a history in this room that's not being spoken about. But one of the issues at hand that I remember when this issue came up a couple of years ago about the renovation elevator and so forth was the cost of maintenance. If Salem Art Association defaulted, who would that fall upon? And I think the answer to that, it still hasn't changed, it would fall upon the city, even though the art association has entered into a contract for that whole thing, for the renovation. I don't know what the agreement says, per se, but I just want to make sure that, first, that it all goes in, that the city isn't hung with the bill. That was one of the big things, that the art association, who wants to take this on, pays the bill from start to finish. And then the other question is, do you have any idea what there is for maintenance of that elevator? Because I know there's annual maintenance.
I believe that that's a question for Sandra, but I would frame this discussion to you like this. If AC Gilbert burnt down its ground tomorrow, or Deepwood, or any other city-owned property, it would be on the city to take care of what was left and do the cleanup and the demo. If anything happened, if there was anything catastrophic like that, it would be on you. So there are many other city-owned properties that would be in the same kind of strait. So that is a good question, and yes, it would be on you. But there would be many other acts of God or things that could occur that would also be on the city to take care of as well. The question about the maintenance budget, I'd like to have Sandra Burnett answer that question, because I'm sure she has exact facts and figures.
Is that okay with the mayor?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. There's an annual maintenance. You get a contract, an annual contract, and it's in the region of $2,000 to $3,000 a year, and that would become part of our budget. But I do want to point out that we contribute to the upkeep of Bush House, and that costs $80,000 a year. So I think in good faith that we stand by what we say we will do, we will do. Salem Art Association does keep Bush House, stewards Bush House. And as I say, that's a cost of $80,000 a year that we fundraise for to keep Bush House open to the public. And that's an important asset, because the park comes along with that. And without Bush House, you wouldn't have the park by the original agreement. So I think that it demonstrates a willingness to be a partner in the city and to stand by these kind of commitments.
Does the Bush House have an elevator? It has two stories.
It does. It does. I mean, elevators are not new. A. N. Bush. It's almost. You remember those movies with the cages? It's like that. A. N. Bush, in his last years, moved back to Bush House. If you know the history, his house was taken over in the city to build the Capitol. So he moved back for a few years, and he had an elevator installed back in the 1950s, I think. I think it was in the 1950s. So, yes.
And the other question, I guess, as long as you're back, had to do with, the current art barn is in compliance to the American Disabilities Act. It doesn't have to be retrofitted because of the square footage. It's just something that would make, I just wanted to clarify that, that we weren't doing, the city wasn't doing their due diligence relative to ADA compliance. It is, it just doesn't have to be, but this is a bonus that would help the art association fully or better utilize the facilities that's there, and help serve the patrons.
That's right. I think as a historic building as well, it gets some leeway. The annex, however, is not a historic building, and so there's a little bit of question there. But I think, yes, it's not a question of whether the city has done due diligence. We just do believe it's the right thing to do. But, you know, the facility belongs to the community. There's a sector of the community that doesn't have access, and we need to be able to include that community.
Thank you for the work that you do. And Laura, it's good to see that there's life after being a counselor.
There is. I was dead for a while, but I have roared back into life.
Good. We're happy about that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike Collins, followed by Jennifer Pratt.
My name is Mike Collins. I'm the chief executive officer for Falk Northwest Corporation. We are the inbound ambulance provider for the city of Salem effective July 1st at midnight, well, June 30th at midnight, or July 1st. Jennifer Pratt is our local general manager, who's a Salem resident. We just wanted to express our appreciation in the confidence that the city has shown in selecting Falk as the ambulance provider. And there's an informational packet in your board packets, and I would entertain any questions you might have. But just to let you know that the transition from the incumbent provider to Falk is going extremely well. We have approximately 106 interviews for slightly over 70 positions. 81% of the incumbent workforce was hired on. Out of the 53 that applied, 81% were offered positions. In addition, 14 of the 15 pieces of apparatus are already in the city. They're at the airport, because it's controlled space, so it's being stored there. The city of Salem Fire Department has been extremely supportive and helpful in allowing us access to the building, as well as the city, and we appreciate the access to Station Six. But we are moving forward. Things are well on a trajectory to be ready prior to, but we will not run calls until July 1st, which is our commitment. But rest assured, we will be ready, and we appreciate, again, the support and the confidence the city's expressed in our company.
Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate you coming down tonight. Do councilors have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Jennifer Pratt? Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilors, I'm Jennifer Pratt. I'm the general manager for Falk here in Salem. I just wanted to introduce myself. I don't really have any other comments, unless there's any questions.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Look forward to working with you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay. I don't see anyone else. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak during this public comment time? This is for agenda items other than on public hearings and deliberations. All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I think there is someone.
Who?
Peter, I'm sorry, Peter, I can't remember your last name.
I put my name on the list for non-agenda items, ma'am.
It is an agenda item.
It is confusing, though, isn't it? We have a lot of lists out there for people to sign up. But if this is a time when you would like to testify, please come. You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. And just state your name and address.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Peter Bale. I live on Rose Street in the northeast, and I'm here to talk about the North Campus and also about the Salem Spartans Rugby Club. As a resident, I attended the town hall meeting for Representative Clem last Tuesday, and a great deal of concern was expressed by all those there, and felt also by myself as to the possible outcomes of what may happen to the North Campus. From a sports point of view, my concern is being still able to have access to the playing fields that's there, and as a resident also, to make sure that we at least maintain and improve the standard of the neighborhood. So my guys, and soon-to-be girls, use the field at least twice a week. And I came here three months ago to address the North Campus issue, and just to explain a little about the Spartans. And what I said was that we were doing really well in the league, and we expected to win the Northwest Champions- the Northwest Championships. Well, on April the 25th, we went to the playoffs in Bend and beat Portland in the semifinal 52-8. And then on the Sunday, beat Battleground Washington in, sorry, the first one was the semifinal, this was the semifinal, the final, we won 58-14. And we went into the Sweet 16 of the Nationals, down to Vallejo in Northern California. Unfortunately, we lost that game, and of course, it would be to a Californian team, and I apologize on behalf of the Oregonians. So, since then, we have been promoted to the next level up in rugby, and we're now in what's known as a D2 team, which is basically pretty close to the top tier in the Pacific Northwest. And we'll be hosting teams from Seattle, Olympia Bend, Vancouver, Portland, and Tacoma in the next season. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're applying for the opportunity to host the playoffs, to bring in any and all of those teams next April. So, we have no home field, we have no official place to practice, and we use the facility that is the North Campus field there, and we're extremely grateful for it. And like all the residents around that area, we're very, very anxious about the outcomes and very keen to make sure that we still have an opportunity to exist. So, I think that, really, apart from the fact that in a couple of weeks, we're holding our annual general meeting, and we have a three-to-five-year plan that we'll be discussing, which will mean that instead of just being a team that's representing Salem around the country, we'll be a club with two men's sides, a ladies' sides, and a high school team. And so, we're doing all we can, and we just look for support, especially at the North Campus area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate your information, and very pleased to hear about the success of your team. Are there questions from councillors? Councilor Benjamin?
How much field would you need?
It's, basically, it's slightly larger than a football field.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, I'd say, thank you very much, councillor. You did recommend that we have a look at the Brown Road Park, and I did walk it, and we've had some surveying activity there, and seen the problem with the potential for flooding. But we are looking to see whether or not there's a way that we could make that work, and that would be very helpful to us.
Hey, Councilor Lewis?
Is the North Campus site appropriate for the tournament?
Yes, it absolutely could be. The only issue would be, we, in order for us to put on official league games and subsequent playoff games, we would have to be confident that when we turned up, there wouldn't be a family having a barbecue saying, "We're here first."
Right. Is there any other athletic field appropriate in Salem for the, such a tournament?
We've not been encouraged in our discussions with the city staff so far, who have been on record as saying there is a field which is appropriate, whatever that means, for rugby, and unfortunately, it's a drain field where the drain, draining is primarily on the surface, it seems. It's not a very, it's not a good place. So, we've not been made aware of anywhere that the city owns and controls that we'll be able to go to, but we have asked. So, we've actually had to go to Kaiser to actually get a field to play games.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate you coming down. All right, that ends the public comment period of time, and we're ready for the consent calendar. Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion?
It's finally here, the consent calendar motion.
I know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.3A by Councilor Anderson, 3.3C by Mayor Peterson, and 3.3F, which is an automatic poll, to make a decision on the Urban Trade Commission.
All right, is there a second? Seconded by Councilor, all right. It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Benjamin to approve the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.3A by Councilor Anderson, 3.3C by myself, and 3.3F by, well, actually, it's an automatic poll because we will be deliberating on that item. All right, are there any questions about the consent calendar at this point? All those in favor of approving this, the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Okay. We'll now go on to public hearings. And we have several public hearings tonight. The first one is 4A, the public hearing on the 2015-16 City of Salem budget. Would the recorder please introduce the public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding the fiscal year 2015-2016 City of Salem budget.
Thank you, and there is a staff report, welcome Kelly.
Thank you again, Mayor Peterson. And again, I'm Kelly Jacobs, the City's Budget Officer, I have a very brief report. Oregon Public Budget Law, excuse me, requires the Budget Committee to recommend a budget to the City Council, which it, which it did on May 13th, 2015. Changes made by the Budget Committee to the City Manager's proposed budget are provided as Attachment 1 to the public hearing staff report. The Budget Committee's fund-level recommended budget appears as Attachment 2 to the staff report. The City Council is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. Notice of this evening's public hearing was published in the State's Journal on May 29th, 2015. As required in budget law, and pursuant to the second page of the public hearing staff report, I need to provide testimony regarding an error in the notice published on May 29th. Each year, the budget public hearing notice includes budget detail for the upcoming fiscal year, as well as the current year budget and prior year actual activity. In the notice published last month, the prior year activity, representing fiscal year 2013-14, included an error in the distribution of the count for full-time equivalent positions between the City Manager's Office and the Community Development Department. The error did not impact the total FTE position count for the city. The corrected position count for the City Manager's Office of 54.05 FTE, and the Community Development Department of 50.85 FTE, is the result of changing the department designation for the Salem Public Library during fiscal year 2013-14. So, following the public hearing this evening, staff recommends the City Council deliberate on the recommended budget within the restrictions provided in law, which are, property taxes cannot be increased from the rate levied by the Budget Committee, no funds expenditures can be increased by more than 10%. Within these restrictions, the City Council may make any changes to the recommended budget that it wishes to make. Following deliberation of the budget, the City Council is asked to approve any changes to the budget this evening to allow staff to return with a resolution to adopt the budget on June 22nd, 2015. At that time, staff will ask the City Council to amend the budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from fiscal year 2014-15, which city staff are currently identifying, as well as any other appropriation needs that were not identified during the budget review process but remain within the 10% cap prescribed in budget law. A complete list of items to be included in the 2015-16 budget will be provided to the City Council on June 22nd, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the public hearing is now open, and I see three people that have signed up on this segment of the agenda. Kathleen Dewanna, followed by Amy Spingate, or Spingath, thank you, followed by Craig Spingath, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Dewanna. I live at, where do I live? 1045 Fifth Street Northeast in Salem, 97301. I'm here representing Bob and Sue Creamer, who own property at 1440 Wallace Marine, Wallace, Wallace Road Northwest. And I would like to speak in support of the budget for Marine Drive, which is on lines, on pages 90 and 91 of your proposed budget. In addition to representing Bob and Sue Creamer, we are working with Leonard Hughes, the Spingaths, and neighbors to the north. Leonard Hughes owns properties to the south of 1440. There are approximately 28 to 30 acres now outside the City of Salem, half of which is in the urban growth boundary, half of which is out of the urban growth boundary. Recent law changes have allowed us the opportunity to petition off a few land outside the urban growth boundary, and this group is, is working together to hopefully create a zone change and then an annexation proposal to bring land into the city. All of that investment is contingent upon acquisition and development of Marine Drive. There are several important benefits to acquisition and development of Marine Drive. The biggest is public safety. The Wallace Road U-turn systems for ingress and egress are extremely dangerous. Marine Drive between Riverbend Road and Hope Cameo, and Cameo Fifth Street can relieve a huge amount of congestion and, and make flow towards the city center much more safe. The other opportunity in is if we can consolidate these lands, go through the important zone changes, annex them into the city, it brings a large patch of land into the city for residential multiple zones, RM1. I understand from, from being on the cities, from watching the cities' planning needs, long-term planning needs for RM housing, this could be a valuable asset. The other, there are a couple more important opportunities here. The house at 1440 Wallace Road is of interest to the Salem Historic Properties Commission, it was the Huntington House. I'm not deeply familiar with all the historic routes, but they have interest in that property. We think with rezoning, it could be used as a great little brew pub, and, and keep and preserve the Lord and Shriver Gardens around the house, and some other elements of historic interest. The third element of importance, I think, to the city now is the potential for extending significant bike boulevard together with the acquisition of the Marine, Marine Drive properties. Funds have been available in the budget?
Excuse me, I need to draw your attention, your time is up. Can you wrap up?
Yep, I can.
Okay.
Since 2008, and as a Realtor, when we have projects on the books that are just held on the books, it leaves affected properties in limbo and takes them out of the marketplace. So, this is an opportunity to move forward and, and allow for some more significant investment in Salem. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Dewanna? All right, thank you for coming down. Amy Spingath?
Hello.
Welcome, and you have three minutes.
Yes.
At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and three minutes, the red light.
Okay, thank you. My name is Amy Spingath.
You might pull that microphone down to your face, there you go. That's good.
My name is Amy Spingath, and I reside at 1460 Wallace Road. I have lived there for the past 11 years, and one of the major problems with pulling out of our driveway onto Wallace Road is pedestrians. So, if we progressed forward in putting Marine Drive in, which is included in pages 90 and 91 of the proposed budget, it would alleviate some of the pedestrian traffic as well as the bicyclists. It could be used as a bicycle boulevard, and eventually, it could link West Salem to Wallace Marine, Riverfront, and Minto Brown Park, making a family safe thruway into the city. Please consider using the budget that has been set aside for Marine Drive to make the purchases for the access, so that we can progress in moving West Salem, West Salem and downtown Salem forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right, thank you. And Craig Spingath? Welcome.
Thank you, my name is Craig Spingath, and I'm here representing my brother Kurt Spingath, who is the property owner with his wife Janet at 1460 Wallace Road. The Spingaths and the Creamers want to join properties and sell it to developers. They are working with getting other neighbors to the south and to the north of them to join together so that they have a larger piece of property to work with. They envision property that can be built with multiple family dwellings below and some light commercial enterprises above on Wallace Road. Creamer's house is particularly would make a nice brew pub or small restaurant because of its historic features, the rock gardens and the topiary trees that are there. The traffic along Wallace Road is somewhat dangerous because of the lack of access to the southbound lanes and the increasing amount of pedestrians and bicyclists on that road. They would like the city to purchase the right-of-way that is meant for Marine Drive. We, they imagine a walking path along the street that would allow runners and pedestrians to have access from Riverbend clear down to ultimately to the end of Minto Brown Park. This will add immensely to the safety and the ability of this highly dense neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councillors? All right, thank you very much. All right, was there anyone else who intended to testify regarding the City Council budget? City of Salem budget, all right. We'll now ask questions of staff, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, all right, the public hearing is closed. And Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I would move a staff recommendation as identified by our Budget Officer, since it was a very long one.
All right, and is there a second?
[inaudible]
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Benars to move the staff recommendation to adopt the, the staff recommendation. All those in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, is there discussion?
If I may just make a, a quick comment on that, yes.
Yes.
At our renewed Streets and Bridges Bond Committee meeting, we had Ms. Dewanna and a couple of other folks from those properties come down and talk to us, and so, we're working with staff on how we may facilitate some of that stuff, but I don't think we're ready enough to actually do any impromptu budget redirection this evening.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. Our second public hearing has to do with state revenue sharing funds. Would the city recorder please introduce that hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding state revenue sharing funds.
Thank you, and there must be another staff report, it's Ms. Jacobs, there she is.
Thank you so much. To receive, to receive state revenue sharing funds, the city is required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing to discuss the possible uses of state revenue sharing funds was held by the Budget Committee on April 15th, 2015. This evening's public hearing, which covers the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds, was noticed in the State's Journal on May 28th, 2015. The proposed use of state revenue sharing funds as recommended by the Budget Committee is an offset to the costs of providing police patrol services. City Council approval of this proposed use is signified by adoption of Resolution 2015-24. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And where, there is no one that has signed up to speak on the state revenue sharing funds public hearing? Is there anyone here who wanted to speak to that? All right, are there any questions of staff? Councilor Bennett? I, I'm sorry, Councilor Benars?
So, Kelly, if you may, thank you for sticking around so much with us tonight. I had a couple of questions. So, the public knows, what is, what do we mean by shared revenue? Because the report, staff report that's online really doesn't give the full depth of where this money's coming from and why they're sharing it.
It, it comes from a distribution of alcoholic beverage. This comes from the OLCC, so it's a distribution of shared revenues related to alcoholic beverages.
It has no?
So, some of it is, there are two, there are two actually, related to alcoholic beverages, and, and they're determined by a formula in terms of what Salem's share of those revenues would be.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with cigarette taxes or gas tax?
Actually, no, this one does not. This one is just alcoholic beverage.
Okay, thank you.
You'll hear a report on the 22nd about the other, the other shared revenues, which would include the cigarette tax.
I was thinking that it had something to do with some of the other fees, well, the taxes on the cigarettes was coming up with another item that'll come up later in the agenda.
That'll come up on the 22nd.
On the 22nd, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions for staff? All right, the public hearing is now closed. And Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this one is easier, I would move that council adopt Resolution Number 2015-24. I would move that Council adopt Resolution Number 2015-24.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Benars to move the staff recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 12, excuse me, 2015-24. Is there discussion? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Our third public hearing item is 4C Unsolicited Written Materials Ordinance. And is there a staff report regarding this? Yes.
Madam Mayor, Glenn Gross. I'm the Community Development Director. This is actually a continued public hearing, and we're just opening it back up for deliberations at this point.
All right.
Brady Rogers is here, however, if there are questions for staff.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Councilor Anderson.
Yeah, I read the report, and it seemed to break things down into sort of like six-month intervals. Here's what we saw, here's what we saw. And it, you know, the last six months has gone downhill rather than uphill, but the staff seems to feel that despite this, things are generally going uphill. I wonder if you could explain that a bit, Mr. Rogers.
Well, my name's Brady. Good evening, councilors. My name's Brady Rogers. I'm the Administrator Neighborhood Enhancement Division. The amount of people who have called in to complain and cancel their service for the Statesman Journal has gone up dramatically in the last six months. However, we think maybe they're just doing a better job at answering the phone and responding to people who have called in to complain. There are a number of reports that we've had previously where people have called and they've tried to get it canceled, tried to get it canceled, couldn't get through to them. So I think maybe they're just digging into the problem here and you're seeing the results of it.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Benjamin.
I'll probably have to address this a little bit in-depth later, but I'd like to find a way that the neighborhood associations could be exempt from this particular ordinance.
Oh, to be exempt?
Yeah.
From the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, the ordinance would require unsolicited written materials be delivered to a safe place on the property, so attached to the door, by the door, you know. So the ordinance was intended to stop the random distribution of the throwing of the materials out of the back of a pickup truck going down the street, sort of out of house, and have them actually placed on the porch of a property.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a motion? Council, oh, excuse me, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move we continue this public hearing to the city council meeting closest to November 23rd.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benars to extend this public hearing to the meeting as close to November 23rd, did you say? November 23rd. And is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, I realize this has gone on for a bit of time, but as we can see, our friends at the Statesman Journal have a rocky road on this thing. And now that they're getting their telephones working correctly, it may help us see actually what's going on out there. So it's taken a few years to get here, but we're getting here. And I'd like to just continue to keep track of this. So we have this on our agenda, and at the point that they stop doing this, we will, my opinion would be, we'll reject staff recommendation and we'll enforce this thing. So Brady, keep high on it, keep track of this. But I think this has worked well with them, to keep them on their toes, coming in on a regular basis. It certainly has cleaned up my neighborhoods. This was way out of control several years ago, and it has helped. But it has been still, I think, over the past few years, pretty spotty, so I'd like to keep track of this.
All right. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilor McCoy.
So being a new guy, Councilor Bennett, why can't you keep track of this without having a five-year motion dragging on through the city council? I'm not sure what keeping track of the issue and us dealing with the issue has to do with keeping this alive another six months.
Yeah, it's, Councilor McCoy, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll answer.
No, do.
Yeah. You remember in your Classics training, the sword of Damocles that hung over? Well, that's what this is for the Statesman Journal. And they do not want, I mean, I just, you look for a way to try to explain this stuff from some sort of historical perspective. And I think it's just a, it's a way of keeping these people on their toes. We pass this, and we stop them from doing something they say is quite important to their business. And I'm not prepared to put that part of their business out of business, the shopper thrown or delivered in a neighborhood. But what I didn't like, and I continue to hear from constituents, is where they drive down the street and just throw it in the front yard indiscriminately in a neighborhood. And I've had that happen twice this past year. And it's to kind of keep them on their toes without putting them out of business. It just makes them come in, you notice they didn't show up this year, I didn't, or this six months, but it lets us keep them on their toes. That's the idea. And we don't always have to drop the sword. You can once in a while just leave it hanging.
Yes, Councilor McCoy.
My Classics is not as good as yours. Just this reminds me of trying to push the rock up the hill and not getting there as far as the city council.
That is Sisyphus.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Is there further discussion? All right. We have a motion on the floor, and the motion was made by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Benars. All those in favor of the motion to continue the ordinance bill 1511 until the city council meeting closest to November 28th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one no vote by Councilor McCoy. All right. Would Council like to have a brief moment to stretch before we go into the next public hearing? I think it'd be a good idea. We'll just take about a five-minute break, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and councilors, I'm Rex Miller from IT, and I'd like to apologize for the large projector not working tonight. It's burnt out a bulb.
Okay.
And it's on order. And so we'll be restricted to the small screen.
Just using the one? Okay. We'll make do. Thank you. All right. I would like to call us back to session here, back into order. Back to you. I'm going to use the chair as prerogative and just reorder for our next public hearing. We're going to jump over D, and we're going to go to E, the ordinance bill number 1115. Do I need a motion to really do that?
Yes.
I do. All right.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I would move that we reorder the agenda to hear public hearing for E at this time.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor McCoy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to hear item C, ordinance bill number 1115. Would the recorder please introduce the hearing? I'm sorry, I just said the wrong one. No, I didn't either. That is the right one. 11-15.
Right.
I need some clarification as to what you're asking for.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have jumped over item D, and we've gone to item E, the ordinance bill number 1115 under public hearings.
Thank you.
So it's for E, having to do with time limits and metered parking for disabled individuals.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding ordinance bill number 1115 relating to parking for persons with disabilities amending SRC 102.085.
Thank you. And I believe we have a staff report. You're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is, and Council, my name is Cherie Warren, Downtown Revitalization Manager, and I'm here this evening to speak to the public hearing on ordinance bill 1115. There are two types of state-issued DMV permits for individuals with disabilities. Standard Disabled Person Parking Permit and Wheelchair User Permit Placard. The standard disabled person placard is dark blue, and the wheelchair user permit is light blue in color and has a large white W in the upper right-hand corner by the wheelchair insignia, and has the words wheelchair user towards the bottom of the permit. If you have a state-issued wheelchair user parking permit, you can park without payment at parking spaces marked for 30 minutes or longer. SRC 102.085A exempts a person holding a disabled person parking permit or wheelchair permit from time limits and time-limited spaces, as well as from parking fees at City of Salem paid parking spaces. Ordinance bill 1115 will amend SRC Chapter 102.085A to remove the exemptions for standard ADA placard holders. Emergency vehicles responding to an emergency and wheelchair placards will continue to be exempt from parking fees and time limits as required by ORS 811.635. Currently, when a disabled individual wants to plead not guilty to a parking citation relating to the placard, they need to come to the municipal court and schedule a court date. Then they need to return to meet with the judge on that date. Persons with disabilities who forget to display a valid placard, providing proof of the valid placard, is a valid defense to the charge. The proposed new SRC 102.085D will permit the municipal court judge to adopt rules permitting a waiver of personal appearance for a person cited under the Disabled Parking Regulations, which will improve customer service for individuals with disabilities. If you hold a standard disabled parking permit, you will be required to adhere to all parking regulations, including payment at meters. The adherence to time limits will also apply within the downtown parking district. Parking will be free if you have a wheelchair user permit from Oregon or another state. You may continue to park for free at any meter that is marked for 30 minutes or longer. The proposed revisions in the parking ordinance will not change where individuals with ADA placards can park or existing time restrictions on meters. It only changes that individuals with the ADA placards will now have to pay to use the parking space and abide by the time limits of the meter. The city has 15, 30, and 90-minute meters, along with 2-hour, 3-hour, and 10-hour. The State of Oregon's parking policy requires individuals with ADA placards to pay for State of Oregon parking resources. The ordinance change would create a consistent policy with the state in requiring payment for parking by all users. As the capital city, Salem's parking needs are different from other cities. The changes in the ordinance will balance the parking needs of the community, increase the number of on-street parking spaces available to veterans and others visiting the city, and create an equitable and fair parking system for all users. As part of the communication strategy, a RAT card will be printed that will be provided to the State of Oregon to share with their employees, and a copy will also be given to DMV, hoping to share with individuals that apply for the placards. That way, they know what our policy is. We will also put this card on any card that will be impacted by the change and update the parking website, along with providing information on Facebook, press releases, and We recommend that ordinance bill number 1115 be advanced to second reading for enactment.
All right. We have one individual who has signed up to testify, Mark Knack. Would you like to approach the podium? And you have three minutes?
Yes.
At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on.
Yes, I know.
You know. Okay, welcome.
Yes, in your packet, you have a letter from me, and then on the backside of that is another letter from the Portland, what they done up there. I'm going to have to, I oppose of this, because what they're going to do is you're going to do some undue hardship with people, because people with disabilities have a hard enough time making it in society without adding any more undue hardship. And this parking thing here, you know, it's, the part that I don't like about it is because the emergency vehicles and people with wheelchairs would be exempt from that, but the rest of us will not. And that's unfair to us. And I realize there's always going to be some people that are going to use the system, but it's an undue hardship. We have worked 30 years to get the Americans with Disabilities act where it is today. And so anyway, I have, it's all in here, but this is where I stand opposed to this. This part of it is because if the wheelchair vans with the placards are exempt, the rest of us have to be exempt too.
All right. Thank you. Are there?
And also, if you want to know what they did up in Portland, I didn't, I couldn't copy all the stuff. I should have had her send me an extra set, but I didn't think about it at the time. But you can go on their website and find out what they did up in Portland.
Okay.
And I want to thank you. But I want you to be thinking of our veterans who have fought the war, who may have a hard time, maybe in a wheelchair, and have limbs missing, you know, and stuff. And if they park in the parkade and have to go to the stores, that's a longer way to walk, and so on. It's just, you know, I can understand, but is what I'm trying to say here, can the business community and people with disabilities, can we come to a common ground? Can we come to the middle on some sort of agreement? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Knack? All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in and speaking.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you're certainly welcome. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on this issue and had not gotten their name on the signup list? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just had one clarification on the recommendation. Subsequent to the first reading, we added the amendment regarding allowing the judge to establish a rule to allow people to appear other than my personal appearance. That is an engrossed ordinance, so the recommendation is actually to adopt the engrossed ordinance and proceed to second reading.
All right. Okay. Thank you. At this point, then, we have questions of staff?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And who would be providing answers on that? Cherie? Staff, are there, or excuse me, councilors, are there any questions? Yes, Councilor Benars.
Small to just start out with, so why were wheelchairs exempted?
It's in the state ordinance.
It's in the state ordinance, the same way that it is, okay. So that's the logic behind it. We're not doing anything new.
No. No. Again, we're adhering to the state ordinance, which exempts wheelchairs.
Okay. I did catch that, but that's good. Thanks.
Yes, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. Do you have any estimate of what this is costing the parking district?
Having the lost revenue?
Yeah, what's the lost revenue?
No, I don't.
Do we know how many people are doing this?
Yes. Approximately, approximately on any given day, there's 134 vehicles parking on-street with ADA placards.
And that's on how many parking spots? 134 vehicles scattered among how many parking spots?
The high-demand area for the parking for ADA placards is around the Department of Revenue, Capitol, Department of Human Resources. I've walked it many times, and basically in any given block, every space is occupied by a vehicle with a placard, or in some instances, one space might be available.
So this is not a problem downtown? I mean, outside of the Capitol Mall parking district? Is that correct, then?
Well, how it impacts downtown is we have free parking in downtown, but it's three hours time limit. So if you have an ADA permit and you're in downtown, you could So if you have an ADA permit and you're in downtown, you could park on-street for eight hours, nine hours, 10 hours.
How many of those people are there?
I don't have that information. We changed, as you know, we changed from unlimited to three hours, and we just did our parking utilization survey last week, so we will have that information probably July. But because we changed our parking practices, I don't have current data.
And this would not affect parking in the parking structures? Because that's all they, right?
That's correct.
So how many, how many on-street, then, parking slots do we have in the City of Salem? I mean, in the affected area, the Capitol Mall and downtown areas? Do you know what the total?
There's 1,400 spaces around the Capitol, but really, 800 in this area that we're talking about that's in the, that has a lot of ADA placards. And then, in downtown, we have 2,000 parking spaces.
Does that include in the parkades?
No.
No, just on the street.
Okay, one more. Did you look at a proposal that would focus on the problem areas, like the Capitol, Department of Revenue? I mean, where you just, you marked those streets as you can't, you know, no free parking for disabled vehicles? I mean, you just literally moved them out of there with that kind of pressure, or at least give them the option to pay?
Let me see if I understand your question. So if this...
Did you look at just locating this where the problem is? You've got 3,400 parking spaces and 134 violators. That seems like, boy, talk about not a problem, if you look at those numbers. Do you see what I mean? But then you indicated it's located in a specific area at a much higher rate, 800 to 134 vehicles, okay? Did you look at possibly just enforcing this in the, you know, asking us to enforce this in that smaller area? Do you see what I mean?
Well, again, the current ordinance is citywide. I would have to defer to city attorney to answer the question on, could you have an ordinance that's specific to a geographic boundary?
To the problem.
You could limit it to the Capitol Mall or another area. I just, it would cause confusion if you're going to select one or two blocks and just apply that in a one-or-two-block area, because, you know, if you have uniformative rules, it's easier for people to understand what's going on and comply with them. If you're changing the rules on a block-by-block basis, then you're going to have more issues.
Just not to, and I don't want to argue it or anything, but these people are smart enough to figure it out. They can park free in this specific area. I suspect they can figure out when they'll get cited in this specific area as well. I mean, we appear to have people using a specific area that understand it's a pretty good deal that if posted, it'd be pretty easy for them to understand to move somewhere else, it would seem like, on a block-by-block, particularly down in that area in particular, where there are a lot of different rules on different blocks down there. Whether it's, this is a press area only, this is electric cars only, this is, I mean, it isn't like it's universal down in the Capitol Mall area, anyway. This is, you know, you've got a variety of, where people ride to carpooling slots. I mean, it really is broken up in a variety of different...
I know, as the staff report indicated, the area that we have the most data on, that we believe is the biggest problem, is the Capitol Mall specifically, those buildings, but not to say it's not an issue in other areas. Downtown specifically, regardless of whether they're disabled or not, if they're employees, there'll still be a prohibition on them parking.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Counselor McCoy.
Well, just, is the average, it's buck and a half an hour, right? Is that what it equates to now?
That's correct.
It's buck and a half an hour, okay. My little math mind went into gear here. If you've got 134 spaces and the average is six hours, it's nine bucks a person, so that's about 1,200 bucks a day, or $6,000 a week, or $300,000 a year, that they're basically scamming the city out of, as far as I'm concerned. So, that's a big number. That's a big number. And my other, I guess, one other thing I would say is, you know, if they're doing it here, and they live in Salem, they're doing it all over town. They're just doing it there at work, and then carrying on and parking where they want to, in other places. And third, you've got a late addition here, where it's somebody, I think, up in Candelaria saying he's got the same problem. All the long-term parking's plugged with the folks with one of these, you know, wheelchair things, and there's nowhere for his customers to park.
Counselor Anderson.
So, we all see the disabled parking spots and parking garages and in shopping centers and that sort of stuff, and this is not what we're talking about at all. These are just regular meter places, correct?
The answer to Counselor Bennett's question was, there are ADA-designated spaces.
Yeah.
And then, if you have an ADA placard, and those ADA spaces are occupied, you can park in any other parking space.
Got it.
For as long as you choose to, with our current ordinance.
Okay.
And the state's policy for their employees with an ADA placard is, you would have to pay for state parking, in a state parking resource. So if you're on the street in our resources, they're currently free. And I also know that the state's policy is, if you have an ADA placard and you need, and you want to use our parking resources, and they have a waiting list, you do go to the top of the waiting list. I did check that out.
Counselor Benars.
Just a few small questions here. A couple of things. When, if this is passed, it's going to go to the second reading, when would it be implemented? The question I had.
July 22nd.
July 22nd?
Thirty days after.
Thirty days after that we vote on it, if we vote in the affirmative. The other question that goes along with that is, obviously, you're printing up placards that you'll give to the employers in the area, but the other side of that are people who are not employees of the state. Is there any sort of grace period, or is there going to be any, the city comes along and puts a placard on the door or something? That's listed in materials?
That's a really good question, and I, in my conversations with Portland, because they implemented this policy July of last year, and I asked them how it was going, and I thought that their recommendation of how they did the transition was, we have our handheld technology, we can give you a ticket, no, a non-ticket ticket that says, this is our policy, and we can track, then, that vehicle's license plate. So if we see that same vehicle's license plate again, and we know that we've already communicated with them, they would be issued a ticket. If it's a new vehicle and we haven't seen it before, then they would get that same courtesy. And that's what Portland has done, and I thought that that was a really good idea. That way, if it's a new person who isn't familiar with their policies, they wouldn't be issued a citation, because when I talked to DMV, other, different communities have different policies relating to this. And so if you go into one community, it might be free. You go into another community, you may have to pay. It's not given to you when you get your placard, which is one of the reasons, I'm hoping, DMV will include our information when they issue placards, because that way, somebody will know when you come to Salem, this is the policy here. But we do have that ability to track the license plate. We know we've given you a courtesy warning the next time you would get a citation, and we could do that for however long we needed to do that with new vehicles. That would be my recommendation.
So we do not need to further engross this ordinance? This is a staff issue that could be resolved? I'm looking at our city attorney to...
As far as issuing a warning first?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we do that in other instances as well. That's not an issue.
I think your answer is excellent. It's what I was hoping to hear, that there's going to be a long practice of this, and there's going to be a little bit of learning curve for the individuals who have been abusing the system. Not that everyone has, but those that have. I like that answer. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a quick question, and that is, have we had a lot of complaints from people who have the correct legal ability to park in a handicap space around the Capitol Building when they, you know, come to do business? Are we hearing complaints from them that there are never spots available for them?
Yes, in fact, what's interesting is, those that have come into actual our office are veterans, who are frustrated because they can't find a place to park, and are very quick to point out that they're all taken with vehicles with the ADA placards.
So there, but we're confident that what we're chasing here is the group of people who perhaps work all day, somewhere near where they're parking, for free all day, then depriving someone who's coming in to do business at the state or elsewhere, wants to get a parking spot, stay for an hour, two or three hours, and then go away. But those parking spots aren't available, because people who could be buying a monthly parking permit simply aren't doing it. Is that what's going on here?
Well, one of the benefits would be, there should be more spaces open for people coming and visiting the Capitol, for whatever the reason. Counselor Bennett's correct. We have 175 carpool spaces in that area. There's a lot of other spaces that are offline, that are permitted to encourage transportation alternatives, other than just a single vehicle. And so, yes, in any given time of the week, all of those carpool permits and spaces are taken, and then you have the demand for parking spaces around those buildings, and so there's just nothing for the public. There's no place for the public to park.
I see, okay. Okay, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to clarify, so you said there's an average of 134 cars, vehicles per day that are doing this, and you might have said that, sorry if I missed it. What's the average length of time they are parking for, do you know? A little over six hours, six hours, right, thanks.
Okay. All right, are there any further questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will close this public hearing. And is there a motion? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that council adopt the proposed engrossment to Ordinance Bill Number 11-15 and proceed to second reading.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Benars to adopt the recommended action to advance the Bill 1115 to second reading for enactment. Is there discussion? All right, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, and it was a one-nay vote by Counselor Bennett. All right, now we're going to move back up to Item D, the prohibiting smoking on city-owned property, Ordinance Bill 1115. Would the recorder please introduce that public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to continue deliberations regarding prohibiting smoking on city-owned property.
Thank you, and we have a staff report?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
No.
Sorry, I just have some slides left over from the last time I'm here for answering questions. I think we're about that point.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Was there, and we don't take any public testimony tonight, because we kept the record open for written testimony, and I believe there are some things in our council packets for that. Are there, is there any discussion, questions for our staff? All right, then I would entertain a motion. Counselor Dickey, do I close the motion, close the hearing first? All right, close this hearing, and Counselor Dickey.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 1015 to prohibit smoking in all city parks, excluding the Civic Center campus, and advance to second reading for enactment.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Benars to amend the motion to prohibit smoking on all city parks, but not on city properties.
And not the Civic Center campus.
And not the Civic Center campus. All right, and is there discussion? Counselor Dickey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I did make that clarification with the Civic Center campus, because technically, parts of this campus are a park, and for now, we heard a lot of testimony a couple weeks ago, and while there seemed to be some questions about issues regarding talking to the unions, negotiating that kind of thing, I think we can make a compelling case for prohibiting smoking in our city parks. We heard from the Parks Board, we heard from Deepwood, we heard from people in our letters, and people here about recreation, and this is really about our parks being healthy places for people. It's about keeping our parks clean. I really, first, I do want to say that this isn't any way, shape, or form judgment on people who smoke or use vape pens. This is not at all, and I know we heard some testimony from people who said that they've been able to quit smoking, using like vape pens, or, and that's great. I mean, I commend anybody who's able to quit smoking. It's a tough addiction to quit, so this is no way to be judgmental about that at all. But we also, we also heard from Salem Health. By prohibiting smoking in our parks, that would address the issue that Salem Health is having with their employees, and I can tell you, last week during lunch, I went walking through Pringle Park, and there were a couple picnic tables with Salem Health employees smoking, and I thought, you know, people who might be at the hospital, going to stay there all day, visiting a loved one, and just step into the park for some rest, but, I mean, they shouldn't have to ask tablefuls of people to move. They shouldn't have to be exposed to that. You know, I think we have some examples of smoke-free parks already in our city. All of our school parks are already smoke-free, because all of our schools are completely smoke-free, so that's been the case for as long as our schools have had been completely smoke-free, tobacco-free, actually, and that's been a number of years. I'm not even sure how many years that is, but probably 10 years or more. We have some other similar places, McCullough Stadium, over by Willamette, by Busch Park, that's been smoke-free for a very long time. And so I think we've got some good examples of that working in our community. I do want to address, you know, in terms of enforcement, I don't see this being something that our police spend time wandering around looking for people smoking in our parks. I think it's a, it's public education, I think it's somewhat self-enforcing, you have good signage, people will see the signs, they'll know, or someone says, hey, did you know we have this? So I think that enforcement could be handled in a fairly low cost and way that is actually in a more positive light. And I do just want to mention, there was a lot of talk about e-cigarettes and vape pens at the last meeting, and I think that's just, I mean, that's just one part of the whole issue, but I did kind of want to bring this up, because I found this article here, this is actually High Times Magazine, you can look it up online if you're interested, and it's kind of a magazine for people to, who use marijuana, is all sorts of things. It's like a trade magazine or something, but I found this article, where have you used a vape pen? And this is just people commenting on all the different places. They've used a vape pen to smoke marijuana, and that's a huge concern with, in our parks, with the advent of marijuana being legal, because, as we discussed last week, or I think somebody brought up, you can't smell it at all. So I thought it was interesting, you know, one comment on airplanes, government buildings, Starbucks, Disneyland, elevators, grocery stores, and all public spaces. So that's a concern, for sure, and I found another article from NPR where they talked about basically the same issue, about people on, who went on to some program on NPR, talking about where they have been able to use marijuana in a discreet way with their vape pens. I know there's a lot of school districts around the country that are banning vape pens for this very reason. I know, you know, having sat on the No Meth Board, this community has a long history of really wanting to protect our kids and our youth against substance abuse, and so I think this ordinance could go a long way in doing that, and just protecting the health of our public and providing safe and clean places for our residents to recreate.
Okay. Are there other comments by councilors? Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor McCoy, followed by Counselor Benars? Council Anderson, followed by Council McCoy, followed by Council Benars.
Well, I'm going to vote for this amended motion, and I in fact would be in favor of the original motion in front of the council, but I think this is a good first step and a good compromise to see how it works, and then we can move that on to the other city-owned properties. I also want to comment on two things I think that we heard a lot of testimony about, and now I'm talking as a lawyer, smokers are not a protected class. I mean, we heard a lot of talk about my civil rights and my individual rights and my individual freedom. Well, under the law, they're not a protected class like ethnic groups, racial groups, age, handicap, they're just, the law doesn't give them the same amount of civil rights as the law gives other distinctive classes of people. And the other, you know, talk was about individual freedom and my right as an individual to do what I want to do, and that only goes so far. I think you have to look at the freedom of the individual versus the rights of society as a whole, and those are two things you have to balance all the time when you're sitting as the council and we're making decisions on what sort of laws and ordinances you want to pass, and I think the balance here, the rights of society are greater than the individual rights of the person. So I'm going to vote for this.
Council McCoy.
Well, I'm not going to vote for this. I've gotten more feedback from folks in the, in my ward and just letters and people I've talked to on both sides, but I will say, in, in my instance, I've heard more people that don't want this than do, and it's basically, I guess I'll disagree with Council Anderson, it's a right for those folks. They're, they're taxpaying citizens. You're not going to convince me that smoking in a park is bad, is not healthy for the other folks sitting in that park when you're in a 25-acre park with the wind blowing. I, you're just not going to get me to that point. Now, should they smoke? No, I quit 30 years ago. But that doesn't mean that because you don't like smoking, you know it's bad for people, you don't like it generally, that you should just, you should pass something that takes, you know, the ability for people outside, not indoors, I get the indoors thing, away from. I don't think it's right. I, a lot of people in the city don't think it's right. They're aghast that this is going to be a proposal. The amendment is better than what was there before, but I still don't like this. I think that those folks, you know, if you want to get rid of smoking, then ban the dang cigarettes is, is the thing, if you don't, don't sell them. As long as they need legal product, they should be able to use it. They can't use it indoors anymore. We're getting to the point, they're not going to be able to use it outdoors anymore. I just don't get that. And as long as it's a legal product and they're purchasing it, and they're taxpayers, and they're in their park, they should be able to light up as long as they're not harming anybody, and I don't think they're harming anybody. So I will be voting no on this.
Council Benars, followed by Council Nanki.
I will be supporting this motion. In fact, I wish I was the one that had made the original motion in many ways. I struggled, I struggled a little bit with, with this issue of why we should do it citywide, why, or why we should not do it citywide and just in the parks. I certainly think at the top of that list are parks. I think it's a commonplace, it's a common sense approach to, I go to a park, I want my kids to be at a park, I want them to be in a safe environment, we, we don't want to have other dangers, we just, just had a dedication of our Crooked House playground that cost $190,000 because we're trying to make sure the toys and the ground that they fall on are, are safe. And, and I think this is the logical first step. I, I'm, I'm not wild at all about a citywide ban, and I'm glad that, that kind of went away, at least for right now. I, I saw too many conflicts with contractual obligations with, with labor, our, our own city employees, issues that would had to have been addressed way beyond, way beyond what this was trying to accomplish at this point. And I also recognize that the testimony that we received, both orally and written, and we've received a lot of it, not really that counts for the two or three dozen people that responded, but it was a pretty mixed 50/50. I want a clean world, but I don't have to smell smoke, or it, you know, vaping got me off of smoking cigarettes after 30 years, or it got me away from drinking because I'm smoking, and then from smoking, I'm lessening down. I heard a lot of people give testimony like that, so I can understand, I'm not a smoker, don't like it, but I understand to some people, it's kind of one of those things that keeps them alive in this world, this crazy world that they're in, and if that's what does it, then let's just make sure it's safe for the rest of us who don't want to be smoking or having secondhand smoke. And I think the parks is a very logical place, and I hope other city councilors will feel the same way.
Council Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, just like to thank Council Dickey for modifying said motion. I'm a firm believer that that's a job for the new city manager coming in as far as what he wants to do with his employees and their workplaces as well.
For she. For she. Thank you, Galata. Thank you.
And, and we don't need to be the bad guy for city employees, we'll see how their new boss may deal with that. That being said, parks, paid for by all of our taxpayers' dollars, 20% of that being smokers, plus all the taxes that we'll actually be talking about on June 22nd, which is, if I recall, close to a quarter million dollars that goes directly to the police department that otherwise would, if everybody just quit smoking, not come into our coffers, the state would severely take a hit. We took a lot of tobacco settlement money, and none of that was actually spent on cessation programs. So that's rather disappointing. I mean, if we really want people to stop smoking, we should take all of the shared revenue money and put it into cessation. For young'uns, you know, most of them aren't coming up that way. For a lot of our older folks, they grew up, smoking was cool. In my case, I grew up in a house with a father who smoked in the house from the day I was born. Hence, I've been a smoker since birth. I've modified down to where I smoke cigars now. So it comes down to a generational thing to some extent, which will be dropping hopefully over the course of the years. We see the vaping potentially increasing a bit, but if I have no nicotine in that, it's more just the presence of someone smoking that people want to not have other people see as, as a form of encouragement, and that concerns me greatly. If it's a matter for marijuana, I can eat a brownie that's filled with marijuana as I go into the park, I can walk around with a Pepsi cup with 100% vodka in it, get trashed. From a, a health point on secondhand smoke, I know that if I am in a park, I will seclude myself purposely knowing which direction the wind is going to where I do not harm another person, and it comes down to that harm. At what point is it common sense to regulate something out of an area for all of the citizens, and it should be based on the harm? I don't think on a daily basis, the number of smokers in parks anywhere versus the number of folks who have an asthmatic or some other kind of reaction to that is that severe. If it's going to a park in a larger event, the, the operator can then designate a smoking area just like we designate a drinking area. That being said, those people who can't walk into a park at all because there might be secondhand smoke, if they try to go to one of those festivals, they're burning barbecues, and there's some serious effluent coming off of that which you'd think would send them into a serious dizzy. I don't think it's that big of a problem. I think there's people who really just dislike smoking that much to where they will try to tell people like me who do smoke how to live my life to some extent, and then where does that lead to as well? If they don't think that's healthy for me to be doing, what else might not be healthy that I'm doing that will follow down the road? So I will not be supporting the amended motion, but thank you for amending said motion.
All right, are there further comments? Council Benjamin, and then Council Lewis.
Today, the water parks were open, and I took my kids there, and we were playing at one of the great water parks here in Salem. And a young fellow kind of walked up next to us, and he was packing his fresh pack of cigarettes, which I know so well, but I don't anymore, and he's packing those cigarettes, he's getting ready to light up, and there's all these kids everywhere, and I'm like, oh man, if you light that thing up, I'm going to have to go and let you know, I got to vote on this tonight. You know, I got, I got to move this forward, and I appreciate if you had some common courtesy. Well, you know what this guy did? He walked down the way, down the sidewalk, there was nobody there, the wind was blowing toward him and away from the children, and he lit up. I didn't even smell it. And then some kids came over, and they started jumping on this little rock structure that covers up some pipe works and stuff. And as soon as he looked, I looked over at him, and he looked over at those kids, and he put the cigarette out, put it back in his pack, and walked back to where his girlfriend or wife was, and stuff like that, and I was like, well, see, there you go. That guy's being a responsible smoker. And I, for one, do not like all the cigarette butts, even in front of my house at my bus stop. Okay, I go out there, I pick them up, and I'm like, okay, I need to put some sort of concrete pipe up there with some sand in it so they can at least put them out there, and I can just come up with a shovel and scoop it out. But understanding that, that the culture of smoking today has changed so much compared to 10, 15 years ago, where they'll actually ask you first when you're talking to them, do you mind if I light a cigarette? My, go ahead, you know? And to, to deprive people that are, again, taxpayers in this city, as well as double taxed because they smoke a cigarette, that they can't smoke in a, in a public area, even though they're going to be very considerate. Now, if they're not considerate, you can just ask them to move on. You know, and, and it just seems like that folks that are really against the, actually people smoking are trying to make a, some legislation or a law to use it as a weapon against people that they don't, they don't want to see, and I think that's a little precarious.
Council Benars? Council Lewis, I'm sorry.
Well, since we're talking about disgusting habits, I'll tell you about one that I remember was my, my grandfather would come and visit, he would do the dishes at our house, and he had no teeth, so when he would start the dishes, he would light up Lucky Strike, no filter, and that cigarette would never leave his mouth. When the ashes got long enough, he would just nod his head, and the ashes would go in the water. So smoking is a, is a terrible habit, and I can remember when the Surgeon General made the cigarette manufacturers put that warning on the package, and they don't do that just for fun. It, it's a bad habit. It's a bad thing. And secondhand smoke is a killer. It's a, it's a bad habit. The ordinance before us tonight, you know, I, I came here tonight after having this on my mind for a month now, ready to vote for this ordinance, but the amended ordinance I can't support. And you're going to find this odd, especially when I give you the rest of my spiel. The ordinance now doesn't go far enough. If you're going to ostracize smokers, then do it all the way. Don't, don't tell them they can't go to parks, but they can stand over here, or they can stand over there. If you're really going to do it, do it. If you're going to, if you're going to have no smoking, have no smoking. Don't ban them from parks. They, they have the right to be there as much as anybody. The emails that I've read over the last few weeks really fall into three categories. There are those smokers that fall into Council Anderson's thing where they feel as though they have, they're a protected class, bullshit. They're not. There are the smokers that really what they're asking for is just some lenience, just some understanding, some compassion. And those are the folks like Council Benjamin ran into today where they really do put out a great deal of effort not to bother anybody. And then there are the folks that, in my opinion, these are the folks that are really pushing the deal tonight. It's the habit they don't like. I mean, I could bring my child into a park and 50 yards away, there's a person there, they're not going to be damaged. My child's not going to be damaged by the cigarette smoke of that person 50 yards away. I don't care what doctor you can bring in and says, oh, yes, they will. That smoke's going to come down here, they're going to smell it, and it's going to hurt them. Horusaki. So there is poss, it is possible to live together, but the prejudice just won't allow it, just won't allow it. As, as humans, we used to see people spit all the time. You don't see that anymore, and heaven forbid somebody would fart in public. You just don't see that anymore, or smell that anymore. So we are evolving as a human, and soon enough, we will not have smoking in our public places. It will be relegated to private places, especially now where some are going to get to enjoy marijuana or get to legally use it to help with their medical issues that are real. But it will be in private places soon enough. And quite frankly, when the city has the nerve to ban it everywhere except private places, then I'll go for that. But if we're going to just say you can't do it in our parks, I can't support that.
Okay, are there other comments from councilors? Seeing none, I think that we're ready for the question. And the motion on the floor was an amended motion by Council Dickey and seconded by Council Benars to amend the motion to prohibit smoking on, in city parks but not including the civic campus. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Would the nays please raise their hands? All right, Council Lewis, Council Benjamin, Council McCoy, and Council Nanki. So the motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to special orders of business, and the item is 3.3F, which was pulled from the action items, and it has to do with the council decision on creating urban tree commission and preferred appeal process related to the proposed revisions. Yes, Council Nanki, and I see Council Bennett's hand.
I'll wait.
Okay, Council Nanki.
So we're doing 3.3A first?
We are.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Art Association, and that would be Council Anderson.
We're doing 3 points, I'm sorry, I started reading wrong, didn't I? I indicated F, but you want, but we should be doing 3.3A first.
Correct.
Sorry. All right, Council Anderson, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. We have an additions and revisions packet, the yellow packet, which has the new action item 3.3A, and I move that we approve the amended operating agreement with Busch Barn as delineated in the attachment to the report of June 8th, 2015, as in the amended packet. Yeah, supplemental packet.
All right, it's been moved by Council Anderson and seconded by Council McCoy to approve the motion as presented, or the item as presented with the supplemental staff report on item 3.3A. Is there discussion? Council Anderson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We heard tonight how almost a million dollars will be raised for this project, and I think that speaks to the dedication of the people of the Salem Art Association, but I also think it speaks to a concern that has been expressed, that if we extend this operating agreement to 20 years for this particular entity that is using city property, and, and there may be others who may want this as well. So we don't want to say that we are setting a precedent, because we're not. In fact, the precedent we are setting is if you have fundraising abilities to raise this much money, and you need to have the 20-year agreement in order to carry it out, then that's the precedent, and I think we would kind of, we would encourage that in other, you know, Deepwood or, shoot, the guy who invented the rector set. Yeah, Gilbert. Yeah, yeah. I know my classics, but, you know. So we're not setting a precedent here, except that it's a good precedent if other organizations can do this and need the city help to, so they can achieve a good goal. I think that's terrific. And the other reason I'm supporting this amendment, I, I think it's very important to allow access to art to all of the citizens of Salem, and that's what this will do. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Council Lewis, and then Council Benjamin.
Well, not a comment, but just a, as I agree with everything, but I just had a question.
question. The, we are kind of leaving the, oh, what is it? Help me out with the word. Anyway, the agreement, kind of being left open. I'm wondering when that, how long that would take to fulfill. May I help you with the word for the agreement? The default, the default agreement.
Well, the default?
The default agreement, yeah. We're leaving that open, but I'm just kind of curious. It's going to be worked on, but I'm kind of curious what the timeframe is anticipating for that.
If I can answer that.
Yes, certainly.
The default language isn't being amended from the current agreement. It basically says any breach of any terms of the agreement by the association is a default. And that would give the city the opportunity to terminate the agreement if they do default. More globally, the city is, the city staff has been working for quite a while on like a standard template operating agreement for all the city's historic properties. And part of that is to clarify that language, to update the language based on more recent case law than the mid-eighties, and to work with all of our operators to get more terms that make sense. There's a lot of terms in this agreement that frankly are outdated, aren't strictly adhered to, nor do we want them to adhere to because they don't make sense anymore. So, moving forward, the amendment's going to give them a twenty-year term essentially on the art center. But the rest of the agreement's still going to be a one-year term with the idea that we're going to work together and move forward on a standard template that's going to make better sense for both parties.
Okay, are there other counselor comments? Counselor McCoy, and, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Benjamin, and then Counselor McCoy.
This seems pretty simple to be able to help bring jobs or existing jobs in Salem. I like the idea how they brought up they're going to be using local labor and a local business to be able to do these modifications, renovations, and additions. I'm for it.
Counselor Benars?
Quick.
I'm sorry, Counselor McCoy.
You know, just throw something in. In one of the discussions, I'm not sure with who I was talking, but thirty thousand people a year go through that facility. And so, you know, if you sit there and think about it, if there's thirty thousand people, there's a percentage, and it's a good number of people that aren't even able to access half of that wonderful facility. And for folks that are that committed to go out and raise dang near a million dollars to install this in the, I think we need to support this. Praise them for their efforts they've done because they're making what is sort of a treasure in Salem, even a bigger treasure than it was before, and opening it up to everybody to enjoy all that it can provide.
Thank you. Counselor Benars?
So, I was hoping to ask staff one or two questions, and this has to do with, basically, what's the disadvantage of a long-term lease with an association like this? What does the staff see as a disadvantage? Normally, it's a long-term lease with anybody is usually to the advantage of the leasing and not the lease or, generally speaking, sometimes it could be mutual. But I wanted staff, who would answer?
I guess I could come up with a few different reasons, and, you know, the lease in its current form, continuing that for another twenty years is not prudent. And City Attorney Atchison mentioned a number of reasons why we'd want to get away from it. Another may be, at some point, a future council may look at a different strategy for all the historical assets owned by the city, and let's say they wanted to have a central manager of those facilities. You know, I can't predict what could happen fifteen, twenty years from now, how the city wants to continue to use the assets. But we do know there's a long-term history there at the Busch Barn. We have facility operators in various historical facilities throughout the city, and we have agreements with them with different terms and conditions, some that are good and some that aren't so good. And so, we have to protect the city's interests as well as we negotiate those. And looking at the long-term viability of the structures and the amount of investment that's been put into them, we want to make sure that they're held as a public asset and that they're open to the public as much as possible, being that they are in the public steward in our hands. So, those are some of the reasons why I would contemplate the long-term lease. And in a situation where you're leasing to someone who is making a lease payment, it's a little different than someone who's operating a facility on your behalf. So, if that answers your question.
The converse, what I'm looking at is, is that why would we want to lease them to the association, whether it's Gilbert, AC Gilbert House, or Busch Barn? Why would we want to limit it to just one year? As I said, it's a mutual balance, I see. They know that they have the commitment of the person who owns the land, or the city that owns the land. And the city knows that they have the commitment of the people who are running the program, that they're going to see beyond tomorrow, beyond next year. So, you would think that you would want somewhere between one and twenty years, you know, some, I'm not going to say the number, whatever it is, but it's just one of those things. Why one year then, instead of twenty?
So, that's the current contract is, City Attorney Atchison mentioned, we're looking at a new template, and I believe you'll probably see something of a longer duration than one year, a year-to-year type lease. So, that's the way it was drafted almost fifteen years ago, or twenty in some instances.
Just to clarify, again, this isn't a lease. It's an operating agreement. They don't have any property rights. They're using our facility. They're maintaining our facility on our behalf. It's a concession, essentially.
I will change my terminology. Okay. And the other question I had is, is cities obligation, this issue came up several years ago when this plan was coming to fruition in the first place. And one of the things that we expressed is, what happens? Or that elevator now that's been added to our building, the community's building, has to be maintained somewhere, you know, whether down the way, we replace it just as we did in the parking structure. But what's the obligation to the city on this, both short and long term, that is really going to make a financial commitment on our part?
The short and the long term is that, you know, the association's responsible for some maintenance and whatnot. The operating maintenance, I think the association would be responsible for, and they would budget for that. Long-term capital maintenance and that sort of thing is usually the city's responsibility. That's one of the issues that we want to talk about on the new template.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? All right, is there a motion? Let's see, the motion on the floor is by Counselor Anderson. Counselor Anderson, could you repeat your motion for me, please?
Yes, I move, we accept the staff recommendation on the amended operating agreement as found in subsection 3.3A of the supplemental agenda.
Thank you. It's been, then that motion was by Counselor Anderson, and it was seconded by Counselor McCoy. Thank you. All right, the question on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you very much. We'll now go to item 3.3C, which was an item that I asked to be pulled, and I would move recommendation to authorize city manager to apply for, accept, and if awarded, execute all documents associated with the ODOT Highway Work Zone Enforcement Grant in the amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Thank you. As far as discussion, the reason I pulled this was because I wanted to really credit the city for pursuing a grant for this purpose, because we know that safety at any of our road construction projects is of major importance, not only to the city, but to all people who are working on those projects, whether they're city employees or whether they're contractors. And certainly was saddened this last week to read about the death of a man who was working at a construction, road construction site in the evening, who was unfortunately hit and later died. And I just wanted to take a moment to talk about that, and to use this as an opportunity to encourage the public to be extra careful around those construction, road construction projects. We have a lot of them going on throughout Salem, and I'm sure throughout other communities in this part of the state. And we value very much the people that are working on those projects. And we need to stop and remember that they are, you know, husbands and wives and parents. And a loss of even one is a loss of too many. So, I just encourage people, slow down, take an extra time, stop and look. Some of these are very confusing, even in the night. They're very confusing for us as we come upon them. And the caution really is to slow down and to just think twice about all of those construction sites. So, with that, I would move the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the other one that I asked to be pulled, no, actually, that is pulled just because of the form that it takes, is 3.3F. And that has to do with the tree commission. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the city council proceed, or schedule, a public hearing on proposed revisions to chapter eighty-six contained in attachment one of item 3.3F.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to delay this item to city, to a city public hearing. Did you state a date? You didn't indicate a date.
I didn't, Madam Mayor. I thought I'd just leave it up to the staff to schedule it. Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, it's just a-
I'm not going to discuss this.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I'm looking at the time, trying to figure out how to get done quick. I think what this does is both honor the work done for two years by a committee of folks that worked very hard on this issue, gives the public a chance to take a close look at this, at this proposed change in the ordinance, as well as give councilors an opportunity to think about how they would like to deal with the question of an urban tree, or of a street tree commission, or some other kind of entity, whatever it is. I am interested in what the committee produced. I think they have developed a plan that fulfills some of the things that I hoped would be resolved, including the ability for me as a member of the public, and I've been through this, so I'm kind of familiar with it, where you have a tree cut down and you don't know why. So, I can ask why, that I can be clearly notified, clearly notified as either an adjacent property owner or a nearby property owner. I get to look at the expert opinion. I get to bring forward my own expert's opinion if I choose to. And it occurs in a public process. There's certainly other mechanisms out there, but I think they've arrived at one. And this will give us a chance to have a public hearing and have a discussion of this. I think, as people pointed out tonight a couple of times, and certainly in the emails, and over time, we're all of us aware that there's just public controversy around the issue of taking down trees. Doesn't matter whose tree. It can be my tree in my yard. Somebody's going to get excited about it. But we all have a right to get kind of excited about trees we all own. And that's what this would give us at least a chance to talk about. And then, probably my biggest concern is, Peter Fernandez is always in the hot seat on this stuff. And I think we ought to figure out some way to have someone besides the Public Works Director be the sole arbiter on this issue. I think it's, he certainly does a great job, and I have no complaints at all with the work he does or anything like that. But I think that it is, I think there's some other ways to share responsibility on this and to deal with responsibility on this that we would share in more because we'd appoint the commission and other things. So, I hope you'll support this. And then, think a lot about it, and we'll take it up later on when this thing goes into public hearing, and people can bring any new ideas they have or other approaches.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I have a question of the maker of the motion. I take it, Counselor Bennett, that what you're saying is that the options that were presented to us today will remain open as options without particularly stating one or the other?
Well, no. I thought, I just threw the options away. I thought that was a very, I did not like the way the options were packaged. It was like-
Yeah, I didn't either.
Pick, it was, remember the old Mad Magazine? Pick one from here, one from here, and you put together a story.
And then you fold the cover together and it's something different.
Yeah, you get a story. Well, that's how I viewed those, and I don't think that worked, so.
So, you are saying that the ordinance would be to have an urban tree commission?
The ordinance that goes, that comes to us for hearing is the one that was produced by this group, which includes the urban tree commission.
Okay, okay.
But it gives you a chance to read it, think about it, and go through the process with it, a nice public process on this issue.
Now, with that clarification, I will support the motion. Because, of course, I, my mind can be changed on the public testimony and what we hear, but as it stands right now, I'm really leaning toward an urban tree commission for all the reasons that we'll get into later. But Counselor Bennett touched on some of them right here.
Are there other comments? Counselor McCoy?
So, just to make sure I understand, after all that discussion, do we need to reword that motion a little bit to get to where you want it to go?
No.
Because that's not what I heard when you said it.
Yeah, no, actually, it is. What you've got, if you take a look at it-
Well, you're right.
Yeah, if you take a look at attachment one, it is a revised draft version of chapter eighty-six that was developed by this committee that was put together. And I'm just saying, let's hold a public hearing on that. Now, what the staff report asks is, would you like to, they are asking us to make a batch of decisions tonight in advance of having that public hearing. You're actually, if you took the staff recommendation, in some ways, not in total, but if you took like option two of suggestion one of, you know, you could end up making a lot of decisions you may not want to make tonight. You might want to go through a public hearing instead and see what you want. That was, I thought, a way too complicated way to describe this. The way I'm describing it's just real straightforward. We'll just hold a public hearing on that. People come in and say, I like it, I don't like it, I change it. You all will get a chance to amend it. You're not saying you're in favor of it. You're just saying, let's get this thing into a public hearing.
All right, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, if I could ask the maker of the motion just a question. So, and I like the idea, basically, hold a public hearing on the proposed draft, February 23, 2015, revised chapter eighty-six.
Yeah.
And just basically ignore the staff verbiage in the report. My question is, is it the intention to, after that public hearing, send the staff out and get further information? Or is it the public hearing, and then the deliberation, and then the decision?
Well, it would be the council's decision. But at this point, if we followed the normal process, we would go through a process of considering this and making changes or passing it as is and moving along.
After the public hearing.
Yeah, after a public hearing, but a good public hearing.
Yes, Mayor Fernandez?
Thank you. I wasn't quite sure what Counselor Bennett's motion was, but I think his explanation to Counselor Anderson, the way I understand it, is that we would proceed with our public outreach on the original chapter eighty-six revisions that includes the urban tree commission. That'll take us several months, and then we will come back and hold the public hearing. And then, folks, that's what I'm understanding, is that we will just proceed with our public outreach, with the chapter eighty-six, the proposed chapter eighty-six amendments, and then hold the public hearing on the entirety of chapter eighty-six.
Yeah, I, just, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job on this. I think, if that is the way you approach these, I think that's perfectly reasonable way to do it. All I'm saying is, I'd like to get this to public hearing at some point. I want to hear what the public thinks about this. And then, I want to work with other councilors on developing a process that everybody agrees with, but takes some time. And if you, I don't think we ought to tell you when and where you take stuff out and how you should do it. I could tell you, Amy does a really good job when she takes them out, if you want to send Amy out, you know? I can help you to that extent.
But, no, we have that part. What I want to be clear about is that the public hearing that you're proposing, Counselor, is on the entirety of chapter eighty-six, not just whether to create an urban tree commission or not.
No, it's, there was a big- No, it was a big change.
Right. So we will, so if this, if your motion passes, my understanding is that we will do our normal process, we'll be back in a few months after everyone, we go out to do the proper outreach so that everyone is well informed and can come to the council, well informed of what the proposal is.
Right.
Okay, that's why I'm understanding your motion.
Okay. Councilor Benars.
I was hoping to hear on the motion, if I understood it. We're all trying to understand this motion. I would like, me, would love to hear from the public, I had to hold a public meeting, but before, it's basically been vetted out, sent into the community, I think it needs some refinement before you start to sell the product. And for that reason, I would like to have the public hearing where people have an opportunity to give their two cents, why and why not, and what and how and who, and then come back, take that, decide at the council level whether or not we want to amend it, send it back to staff for further revision, and go through that other process before it is sent out to the public comment. That's what I was hoping to hear in your motion, and now I'm hearing something a little different.
But, no, you didn't hear either. I really am uncomfortable instructing the city manager and his staff how to handle this as a public matter. What I want, and I think what we all want, is a public hearing on this issue where we can hear from the public and proceed to move this agenda item along. I mean, this has been floating around now for a couple of years, I think, or a year and a half, something like that, two years. So this is just to get the ball rolling. When the public is informed on it, I mean, you and I go to our neighborhood groups, we'll tell them about this, we'll show them 86, we might discuss alternatives that have been discussed. We actually know, each of us quite a bit about this, so does the staff, but I really don't like telling them how to phase it out to the public.
Well, I agree. I'm not trying to tell them what to do.
No, no, I don't think you are, but...
But I just, I'm just saying that I wanted to get the public input sooner than later, that's what I was trying to say, and then take that public input to help foster or craft this, further craft this chapter.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, the only concern I'd have is, I'm not sure you mean it the way I'm hearing it, so I want to make sure, is you want to craft it before it goes out. This has been crafted by a committee. Have the public look at it, us look, us in particular ought to be looking at this. And I'm not sure we want to try to rewrite it too soon. Do you see what I mean? Or am I misunderstanding? Am I worried we try to rewrite it right now without knowing precisely? And I think that's almost what we were asked to do, is start rewriting this thing. I'm not ready yet. I don't know how anyone's going to react to this.
Okay, so truth be known, I know that this has come to me over the last couple of meetings, but I don't have the full depth of knowledge of this, of what the committee has done to put together an urban tree. There's a lot of water under the bridge I don't know about. And so I need some educating as well. I mean, this sounds like work session kind of stuff, where you sit down and you kind of, what's it all about and what's the input on the whole thing?
And it could be, it could be. I mean, all I'm asking is we get to a public hearing at some point.
I agree with that. Get to a public hearing, that's what I'm asking for.
That's all I'm asking for.
Sooner than later, though, that's what I'm saying.
Well, let the mayor figure out how to get us there.
Well, my comment is, I wasn't wanting us to get there. And you all know that. Because when I laid eyes, every time I've laid eyes on this, and I see this urban tree commission, I see hours and hours of staff time, I see hours of council time as we, first of all, require, you know, request people to apply, and then we wade through the applications, and then we make the selections, and so then we're constantly filling the positions. And those of you who've sat on the Boards and Commissions Committee, you know, it's not easy and not always fruitful because people don't always apply. And I was also trying to avoid the staff expense of staffing another commission. I am determined that this council stop bleeding money, and this is one way to stop. This is one way to say, we have excellent staff, on staff right now, from the Public Works Director on down, that are skilled and knowledgeable and well aware of being able to make decisions about the trees. And I was not favoring a commission, I don't favor a commission. We have a shade tree advisory committee right now, and look what a mess everybody says it was when decisions were made and people didn't have input. Well, where were they? So, they were there, but people say they don't have, didn't have input when they don't like the decision that's made, and that's the bottom line. But I would like to say, with regard to relying upon the highly competent professional staff that we have, not creating another commission which is a time waster and a money waster. And instead, what I'd really like to see, because this is what I heard is the problem, the basic problem that people were complaining about was not the trees went down, but they didn't understand why. They didn't know they were going to go down, they didn't know why they were going to be taken down, and after the fact, they hardly knew who to talk to to find out the answer, except they'd call their counselor probably after 10 o'clock at night and want an answer. I think the part of the problem that we're trying to solve here is, we don't have a system that has adequately satisfied the public in their desire to understand why we do what we do with trees. And so even if we were to simply go out and take this as it is, which I don't approve of, but take this as it is out to, I guess, neighborhood associations and civic groups, et cetera, and then have a public hearing and have people come in and talk, we're still not addressing the issue that I think we need to address, and that is that we do need to ask the city manager to direct staff to come up with a process that will meet the public's needs and desires for understanding with regard to why trees are going to be removed. This does nothing toward that problem, and I'd like to see that addressed somehow in this process. So the motion as it stands right now, I can't support.
Yes, Councilor Bennett?
Let me try to talk you out of that position, Mayor, just for a second.
And I know Councilor McCoy has his hand up.
Just for a second, Mayor. What this gives you, for your point of view, I think is a vehicle to get there. And that's all that any time any one of these proposals are, they're vehicles for us to work with each other, to find a way through issues like this. I mean, I agree with you. I've been through this, as I said, I've been through this process personally, and it is confusing, and you don't know who to call, and you're always surprised when your yard changes because somebody takes a tree out of the front strip, you know? So I think you're, we're talking about the same thing, it's just, how do we get the process started to get to that, to the kind of discussion you're talking about? And I think the way you do it is, you start with something, just a vehicle of some kind, which is what this is, and begin asking the public and yourself and each of ours, each of us and our staff, kind of, what is the right mix of all this stuff? And then we will be able to produce it. But I just don't know how else, just from my own experience, I just don't know how else you do that to get from here to there. Or we'll just have work sessions or talk to each other, and we'll never have a way to solve this problem. It won't get resolved, we won't have a method, we will have people not knowing what's going on, and we'll continue to have poor Fernandez pilloried in public on a regular basis over his tough decisions, and that's what we don't want to have either. So, you know, we just got to get there somehow. I just think this is a way to get there.
So Councilor Bennett, though, you're saying that what we would direct staff to take out to the public is the question of, do we want a tree commission?
No. I'm just saying...
Because that's the way your motion sounded.
No, my motion is, I just want to get this work, this two-year work product of our staff and this committee that did so much work, up for, I just want to move it as the best vehicle available today and go toward public hearing. How we get there, how the staff presents that, how it goes out to the neighborhood groups and all this other, I think will be the process of getting there. I'm not trying to, I don't want to tell them how to do this. I know how I'm going to do it with my neighborhood groups, I'm going to go talk to them about all the different ideas I've heard and listen to what they have to say. I just don't think we can, nobody's written the ordinance that you have described yet. That's the problem. This is the only ordinance available to us to work with. But you could have the ordinance you described if you have enough votes. You know what I mean?
I exactly know what you mean.
So, I understand what Councilor Bennett is saying. I would like, it would help me a lot, because if I'm sitting here with a finished product, now I don't know what changed. It would help me if you had the original ordinance and then you lined out what they changed, so you can go through and find out where the changes were made and what's still the same. Because right now, I don't know if it's all new or just little parts of it are new.
I think we had that in an original work session or something. I have a pretty thick file of all this.
Right. Mayor, if I may, Chapter 86 is actually a very small chapter that has very little direction, and it's the whole, it's the whole crux of the issue that we find ourselves in, and the reason Councilor Bennett did his councillor motion almost two years ago was to put some meat around Chapter 86, so there was more direction and more, a better way to address the public tree issue, and that's what the committee worked on. So what you have before you, we just included in here for your information, is the rework of Chapter 86. But if you open up the, and we can give you the, obviously, the red line strikeout, and I think we have done that in prior, in other work sessions. But if you simply open up Chapter 86 to, in the current chapter, in the current codebook, you'll see that it's two pages worth versus a much more defined effort, which is what we have here in the proposal. So I think, Mayor, if I may, just to, I hate to interject in...
No, go right ahead.
In council deliberations, you know, what, as we go out to the public to show them what's in Chapter 86 and what is proposed, which is, includes the urban tree commission among other, many other items that are on here, we would obviously speak to the public about the fact, the public understands that there is some debate, some concern about whether there should or should not be an urban tree commission, what's the role of the staff, what's not the role of the staff, and we would obviously bring that forward in the presentations and say, here is what the committee proposed, this is what's going to be before the council in a public hearing, you should know that there is some controversy surrounding this urban tree commission, and you should be ready to testify about that issue. If Councilor Bennett's motion passes, and obviously, that is the way we would present this thing, so that the public, not just the ones that have been here this evening, but everyone that we would speak to, would have an opportunity to speak to this issue which is controversial, and frankly, any other part of the revised code that they may find controversial, they may want to speak to the council about, so that then the council, Councilor Benars, can have the opportunity to make changes to what's proposed.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, I might suggest when you go out that you take the proposed draft language and you come up with a sheet that says something like, here is a list of highlights of the proposed ordinance, and then you talk about the tree commission, you talk about the potential appeals processes. You don't use it as recommendation language, you just highlight the options that are inside the code language, so that people that you're talking to can look and listen to those highlights. They're not going through the actual code language, trying to figure out what it is. So rather than looking at a staff report that talks about recommendations, they're looking at a report that talks about the highlights of what's inside the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, reading through this and thinking about the US Bank issue a couple of years ago, I'm still not clear what happened with that. I mean, that just fell apart in a lot of different ways. And having been the recipient of some very panicked emails in the middle of the day saying, you've got to call Public Works and say, stop having my neighbors across the street cut down all of the trees on my street, or what was perceived to be happening, there, clearly, we need a process. And it's interesting where, I'm looking here, so, you know, this is asking whether we create an urban tree commission and what type of decision and appeal process. I kind of see, you know, we need a process, we need a really clear process, we need good communication. I wasn't clear even from the last work session we had two or three weeks ago, I didn't think that that went far enough. And, you know, I tend to agree with the mayor that it's, this is really a communication issue, but I, you know, I think having a public hearing, hearing what the public thinks, I think that's, you know, that's completely fine, as long as it is presented in a way that says, hey, you know, there's some controversy about that. I really see that, you know, the issue we have is a communication issue about removal of trees and how we handle our city trees and any, you know, in the right of way and that kind of thing. The vehicle, or not the vehicle, but the way we get there, the way we address it. I mean, I was thinking really of this as like, kind of like, I need a stop sign on my street because people are, whatever, they're speeding or whatever. Well, maybe the stop sign's not the solution, but we still have the speeding problem, and how do we handle that? And, you know, having a public hearing, hearing what the public thinks, they may have some ideas for a good process that we could have, whether it's a tree commission or not a tree commission, you know, I think it's okay to hear from the public, but really, we do have a communication issue, and that's really, I think, at the heart of this issue. And so I think, I mean, I think it's reasonable to have a public hearing and ask what the public thinks.
Well, I think asking what the public thinks is a good idea. I just want to know that at the end of the day, and I certainly hope it will be the outcome, one of the outcomes would be that the city manager would be directed to work with staff to come up with a process that would educate the public about what's going to happen with trees and why, and who's asking for it, and what the problem is, and what the decision is, and when it's going to happen. And none of that is spelled out in any of this. And I'm still afraid that if we just leave it tonight and say, okay, we're going to hold a public hearing, and in the meantime, the staff will go out and talk with the public about what the, what this committee put together as a new section, still isn't going to, it's still not going to address the major problem that we have here, and that's the lack of the communication. So I'm prepared to make, I guess, an amendment to that motion, that if indeed we were going to go out with information to the public about this as it is drafted now, but that it also contain a provision that staff be directed to come up with this communication information plan. Would you be willing, would you be willing to accept to modify your motion to put something like that in?
Oh, yeah, Mayor. I think any of us who have strong thoughts on, you know, opinions or a plan, or, you know, as you're doing, defining it, I think we ought to put those things together, and they should become part of any packet that goes out, because it helps, I think, the staff probably understand what the debate looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Because as you talk, I mean, I'm hearing, even now, I'm understanding better and better what you're talking about in terms of your approach. Because this shouldn't, I mean, obviously, this won't be the only approach. This could be completely gutted and stuffed and become something entirely different, depending on what's going on, so...
Councilor Benjamin, and then Councilor Benars.
At the last work session that we had, it seemed pretty cut and dry to me, where they put big yellow tags on a tree because that tree has been identified by the Transportation Department that goes out there and looks at the tree, that thing's diseased, we got to cut this down before it spreads, or what have you. So they put a yellow tag on it.
Yeah.
I think we mentioned, you probably should put a few more on there, just so everybody says, okay, there's a bunch of yellow tags on it, what's going on, let me read it, okay, I need to get involved, then the public has the opportunity to be involved. It's right there in their face. Mr. Hines, that came up and discussed today, I mentioned that he didn't know anything about what was going on tonight or anything like that, it wasn't in the State's Journal, it's on the website. You know, it's on the website. And that's your best source of information, what the city is doing. So as it was explained in our work session, they label up the tree, they have our city arborists come out and take a look at it... They have our city arborists come out and take a look at it. And he mentioned, Mr. Hines, mentioned that one arborist from the city could say it's diseased, but then another independent arborist comes in and says, "Well, no, it's not." So do we go, "Six out of 10 arborists say it's diseased?" You know? You know? Yeah. So, you know, somewhere, there's got to be some process. And going forward with having a public comment, I know, I for one, will be taking this to neighborhood associations, kind of laying it out there. Here's how it usually works, and here's some ideas. Give me some of yours. Then we have that public hearing that can, like, solidify things, and we can really bring it. Because it's kind of been floating out there for too long, and it seems pretty cut and dry. Thank you.
Thank you. My concern is just that people will think that we will create an urban tree commission and all the problems will be solved. And my concern is that that is not addressing the problem at all. I think Counselor Benardes had his hand up.
So one of the things that I have heard, and I didn't have to hear it because I already knew it, and it had to be, get the politics out of the decision-making process. And the more, we want to have public involvement in this whole thing. People want to have a say on what happens to our public trees. But that all turns very political. When it becomes political, it becomes a turmoil because we have disagreements as to, is it healthy, is it not healthy? You've heard all the issues tonight. It's just, I'd like to get the politics out of the tree removal decision and leave it to the experts that know about the trees. That's the bottom line for me. I don't know enough about trees. I love them. I have them all around my house, but I don't know. I hire somebody who does and takes care of those trees because I don't know anything about it. So that's my first comment. The second thing is, at this moment, I'm a little confused because I've heard several people say, including myself, "I want to hold a public hearing." But some are saying that now with a product that they think is finished and ready to go out to market, ready to go out to the neighborhood associations to be vetted. And some of us are saying, "Well, I want to get public input, but I don't think the product we have here is finished yet." And if we start going out and vetting this to our neighborhood associations into the public, they're going to think, "Well, this is a done deal." I mean, we've got our final say-so in this whole thing, and this is what's going to be the law. And, "Yeah, I have a few comments about this, that, and the other thing, but this is what the rules are going to be like." I, too, align myself with the mayor. I've seen, we have so many boards and commissions. We have such a hard time filling them, and it takes hours and hours of staff time. If we only have four of these, five of these, six of these decisions that need to be made in a year, we're setting up a big monstrosity for very few decisions that frankly, there are some things within our current system that we could use. Example, Parks and Recreation, the Board for Parks and Recreation, because they deal, the trees are dealt with by the Parks Department. Could that be melded into that whole thing where it's, could it be taken and put to one of the other committees that we have right now so that we're not having to make a whole new committee? Maybe we revise that committee's structure or goal, or, and we set up a different. But I'm confused because half of me wants to vote, and half of me wants to vote the other direction. And neither of, I'm not getting what I'm wanting at this point, so you're going to have to sell me.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. I think Counselor Benardes, your point about there's only four or five, really, to me, is a point in favor of an urban tree commission because if there's only been four or five, look at the firestorm we've had about this. And so these minor issues create a lot of public controversy. But I really want to get to the point of the process. I mean, to some extent, we've been chasing our tails around here. We have a meeting, then we have another meeting, then we, can we do, and we, and the public, as part of this committee, met for a year or some time, and they came up with an ordinance that, in their view, addressed all the issues that we have all been raising. Notification, how is the decision made? So we've got, this is the beginning point of the process. So we need to put that out to the public, and then we can amend it or change it. But we don't want to start trying to do the little amendments right now to a committee work that took many months to come up with. We should put that out to the public, see what their response is, and then make any amendments if we want to. So I'm going to support Counselor Bennett's motion.
Well, I have a quick question then for Peter Fernandez. Does indeed the revised code, Chapter 86, spell out how the public will be informed when trees are going to be removed?
I believe that it does, Mayor. And then anything that is not specifically laid out in the code, there is the opportunity for rulemaking, for administrative rulemaking, to get into the nitty-gritty. And in fact, we felt that typically, we will bring a code amendment and then promulgate rules afterwards. In this case, we want it, even though council doesn't adopt rules, the staff adopts rules, we wanted to have those rules ready as well, and they are ready as well because it's important to have those side by side so that the council understands and the community understands exactly what, in fact, here they are, what those rules are going to be with respect to, you know, any number of issues, including notification.
Page 10 of the draft ordinance, which is the attachment to your staff report, has the notice provisions.
86.080.
And how is that, how does that differ from what we're doing right now?
I think it does a better job of, what we do today is post the tree and have discussions with folks if they call. The 080, 86.080, gets into the details of going to the neighborhood association, you know, the number of days that it's posted. We were trying to emulate what we do with the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission, which has served us very well, the number of days that it's posted, how it's posted, et cetera. So that's what we're trying to emulate with the proposed tree code. It's a process that we feel the neighborhood association certainly and citizens are familiar with.
And this is a process designed, then, to alleviate the problems that we've been having where members of the public feel that they are not being advised, they're not being informed, they're not being educated about the reason for the decision.
Right. So what's key, what-
Madam Mayor, if I can, point of order, we're about 30 seconds away from our expiration time.
Oh.
I'd like to extend, make a motion to extend for 30 minutes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to extend for 30 minutes. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
So Mayor, what we'd like, what this does is, first of all, post the tree so that anybody that drives by it, anybody that walks by it, understands what's going on. The additional element here is that we would also notify the neighborhood association so that at least the, not the citywide community in general, but certainly the neighborhood association would be aware that there is a proposal for a removal of a city-owned tree. And that's kind of the added notification process that we're proposing here. And again, emulating the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission process.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
I just, I really wanted to take a minute to convince Counselor Benardes that he really would be on the right track voting for my motion, but I just don't want to take the time tonight.
Aw, come on.
Because you would be. Warren, trust me, this is the way to go because it gets the thing going. And if we don't, we'll sit around talking about this for months on end, and we'll wait till we find something we think is perfect, and then think we can send it out, and we'll discover it's not perfect. And we just got to get the ball rolling. That's all I'm suggesting here.
We're pushing the rock up the hill.
Or down the hill.
All right. All right, then. There's a motion on the floor. Counselor Bennett, would you like to repeat your motion?
All right, dumped. I move the city council schedule a public hearing on proposed revisions to Chapter 86 contained in Attachment 1 of Item 3.3F.
All right. And it was seconded by? Probably Counselor Benardes. All right, it's time to call for the question. I appreciate everyone's patience and hard work on this. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. I believe that we are now to the point of commenting on information reports in our packet. There were three. If there are any questions or comments on those information reports? All right, they look wonderful. Then we'll move to ordinances to the first reading. Would the recorder please introduce the ordinance item for the first reading, 8.1A?
Ordinance Bill Number 12-15, Amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 7, Related to Downtown Parking District.
Thank you. And did we have any staff report on this already? Yes, and so we're at this point, we are simply entertaining a motion? All right. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion regarding this? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Bennett?
I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benardes to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And our second item has to do with vacating a portion of Rainier Drive Southeast, and that is Counselor McCoy. Do you have a motion?
I move staff recommendation. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benardes. Is there any discussion? We'll move for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And Item 8.1C, vacating a portion of First Street Northwest and Lincoln Avenue, and this is in Counselor Bennett's ward in West Salem. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Oh, we'd have to do the reading first. All right, sorry. All right, then will the recorder please introduce this item?
Ordinance Bill Number 14-15, Vacating a Portion of First Street and Lincoln Avenue Northwest, Located West of Wallace Road Northwest.
Thank you. And do we have a motion, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benardes to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Benardes.
I'm just curious, as a point of order, why we didn't do the same thing in reference to the other first readings?
I think because I was rushing, right? Okay. That's all right. Okay. So on this item, 8.1C, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And I do apologize to the recorder for rushing through this. So I will give you a chance to read, to introduce the first one as well.
Ordinance 1315.
Just 1315. Okay.
Ordinance Bill Number 1315, Vacating a Portion of Rainier Drive Southeast Located Approximately 1 Quarter Mile East of Liberty Road Southeast.
Thank you. All right. And then for second reading, would the recorder please take the roll for that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have to move, I move the staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, now I'm totally lost.
8.1B.
Oh, we're doing the motion over again. Oh, I didn't understand that. All right. It is getting late, and I am tired, and I apologize. All right. So this is, I am still on East Coast time.
So Counselor Benardes, did you have a second?
Yes. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benardes. Is there discussion? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. All right. And we did it correctly on 8.1C, right? Okay, so we're ready now for second reading of Item 8.2A.
Ordinance Bill Number 815, Relating to Transient Occupancy Taxes, Amending Salem Revised Code, Section 37.060. Counselor McCoy?
She's just calling the roll.
Counselor Dickey? Counselor Benjamin? Counselor Benardes? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Bennett? Counselor Anderson? Counselor Nanki? Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. That passes. And we have time now for public comment for items other than our agenda items. And we have left on this agenda Eric Schmidt, and then, is it Terry Wallen? Is that correct? All right. We'll start with Eric Schmidt. And you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Thank you. Eric Schmidt, 5905 Northeast 37th Avenue in Portland. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me this time. I am addressing the intent of award for supply of ductile iron pipe to Correx Water Products. Excuse me, Madam Mayor, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
That's a matter that's, a protest has been filed. It's an administrative review, and the council has no authority over that action, so it's inappropriate for you to be speaking to that right now when members of staff are going to be hearing that protest. That was not the feedback we were given. Okay. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Is that the case also for Terry Wallen? All right. Okay, thank you. It's unfortunate if you were given incorrect information by staff.
I apologize if the letter was incorrect.
Okay. All right. Going down the list, Betty, it looks like Betty James. Yes, thank you.
This is somewhat of a surprise for me. I came to talk about public restrooms being open to everyone, especially the homeless, those without a place, a home, to call their own, the unsheltered. And at 9:30, I walked across the outdoor hallway to use the restroom and found that both the women's and the men's is locked tight. And even pushing the buttons, those square shiny buttons for the disabled folks, didn't work. There is no restroom. I could not find or discover a restroom inside these chambers, these stellar cedar chambers. There's no restroom. Any one of you that needs to use a restroom on your way home tonight, or before, or slightly afterwards, there's no restroom.
Well, I do apologize. We have restrooms right back here, and we certainly would have pointed those out to you. I do apologize that you did not know where the restroom was. Maybe we do need better signage, and apologize about that.
So to get to the matter at hand, first and foremost, I believe in urban farming. Well-regulated tent campgrounds downtown Salem, tended and supervised by the Oregon Department of Forestry in Salem, Oregon. Who does it better with parkland than the Oregon Department of Forestry? I think there should be an end to Salem's 1920 Jim Crow laws. Restrooms all over the city must, must be immediately open to everyone, everyone. Mayor Peterson, on Wednesday, February 19, 2014, more than a year ago, you promised at your 2014 Annual State of the City Address at the Salem Conference Center downtown that you would arrange for porta potties available open 24/7 to the homeless and unsheltered. You have a failed- You have failed in your elective capacity. You have failed miserably and neglected your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens and residents of Salem, Oregon. You said that shelter residents had asked you to arrange for toilets to be open and available to them. Further, you said you planned porta potties. And I was raised in Salem, more than race. Salem has always been divided by caste, the rich versus the poor, the 1% versus the 99%. As late as 1953, 1953, not that long ago, Salem was a sundown town, was purposely all white, and mostly is today, 2015. While race discrimination was brought to Salem's attention by then-Governor Marko Hattler.
I apologize, but I am going to have to use the five, the three-minute rule, and I apologize because I need to treat you the way I treat everybody else who comes to speak. Thank you very much. And I will say to you that we have tried in several cases to have some porta potties available, and I believe there are some that are available now 24 hours a day, and were available a matter of months ago, to my knowledge. I also know that our Public Works Department, I believe, and Parks Department has tried to work with some groups to be sure that we have some facilities open. But I would agree with you, it's not perfect, and we're not done yet trying to find the answers. Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Ms. James.
Yes.
It's just nice to put a face to an email address, and we did receive your testimony earlier today.
Yes, my email is my name, bettyjames@gmail.com. Love Gmail.
So, thank you very much. If I could ask you, because, and it's not so much recently, sometimes there's things that really don't have anything to do with us, and it's more like buddy chat that we're hooked into, so if you could try to not have us on things that are not anywhere near our jurisdiction, it'd be appreciated. We get a ton of email.
I don't understand what you mean, I'm confused.
What's that? You know, there's things that we can't do anything about, or it's almost like you're posting out something.
That's not true.
In general.
There could be a city ordinance right away, instantly.
No, not on this one, just in the past, on other things. This one is very pertinent to our activities here, but there's been some past ones that it seems we're just kind of looped into on a group.
Well, the past is the past.
Yeah, so, and like I say, I haven't seen that lately, so.
Those restrooms across the outdoor area are locked tight. There's no restrooms, except the ones in here.
And that's a great point, and we do need to improve that because that is an issue citywide, and it's been brought up a few times, and that's a tough one.
Any other questions, statements, queries?
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Under new business, we have, I believe, two counselor items. 10.2A, Counselor Anderson, do you have an item or a motion?
Yes. I move that we refer to the Legislative Committee the issue of the city taking a position on the current legislation in front of the Oregon State Legislature on the Oregon State Hospital campus. And I supported this, well, I make that motion, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
All right, discussion?
If you look at the infamous yellow sheet that came out, the third and fourth pages back are descriptions, from the back are descriptions of what I'm talking about. We have a position, and the position is just sort of a vague one. We support development of the North Campus in accordance with community principles, and, you know, motherhood, and apple pie, and the American flag sort of thing. But items are, matters are moving pretty quickly, and Counselor Lewis, and Counselor Bennett, and I attended a town hall meeting with Representative Clem last week, and you can see, I described that a bit, a general policy. We're now, the legislature is now looking at specific options as proposed by DAS, which would be, if DAS gets no money from the legislature, they're ready to talk about just selling the whole property to the highest bidder as is, end of story. If they get some money from the legislature, it looks like they may be talking about giving the park property that we've talked about to the city for a nominal like dollar, and then treating the Yaquena Hall and the Dome Building differently, and then looking at some sort of remediation, meaning tearing down the buildings on the, between Park Street and 23rd. But they want to know what the city's position is. Then DAS sent a letter on July 5th to, June 5th, excuse me, to Representative Clem that pretty much lays out what DAS's position are, and I know that Representative Clem and I talked about this on Saturday, he was at the park thing, and so we need some sort of more definitive guideline as what the city's position is on this, and it seems appropriate to refer to the Legislative Committee, and we need to have it back by the 22nd because we all know that there's four to five weeks in the legislature. So that's my motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Dickey, was it? Thank you, to direct that the city council Subcommittee on Legislative Matters address this issue. All right.
By the next council meeting. With the recommendation by the next council meeting.
By the next council meeting. All right. All those in favor of the motion, Counsel Benars?
So if I understand, it's not a decision-making process at this point, what you're asking the committee to do is go back and get research, or make a statement to, or what?
Pretty much a statement, because what DAS has said is, we need to know what the city's position, and the legislature is saying we need to know the city's position, because do we want to authorize money to remediate the property, or if we don't authorize money, DAS is saying, we'll just leave it as is and sell it to the highest bidder as is.
So has this council, as far as I know, hasn't had a discussion as to what our position on that parcel, the North Campus, has been?
That's why.
The only conversation has been in reference to a park on the northwest corner.
Well, it's not necessarily a bill, but it is, they're going to be appropriating money or not appropriating money to do something. And if the money's appropriated, you know, we, our say is gone basically, except for zoning and any other things of any kind of development.
Well, let me interject that for several months, there are staff from this city that have been working with a committee with DAS and the Neighborhood Association and on this very piece of property, and there have been a lot of discussions back and forth, and a lot of understanding that I was advised about, and pleased to hear that everyone was trying to work in sync so that that exact outcome would occur, that there would be legislation and that there would be funding that would come. But Casey, you want to talk about that?
I'm going to address Counselor Benars' comment about taking the position in the legislative position or policy statements that were adopted in January by the council. There was one related to the redevelopment of abandoned state-owned properties, and specifically it says to support legislation that encourages the redevelopment of the North Campus and other surplus state-owned properties, including providing funding for selected demolition of buildings and site preparation for potential redevelopment to enhance both the livability and economic vitality of adjoining neighborhoods. So that's the position that we've taken to date, which is to support the funding, and we have been involved with conversations to this point with regard to the, I heard it one time, up to eight million available for remediation of the buildings on that site. I guess would I, and Counselor, perhaps you can help me understand where our position may not be strengthened or may not be straightforward is with respect to the historical preservation of the buildings, or can you help me understand what?
I will tell you that the state representative whose district covers that area does not believe the city has any policy. Maybe I'm stating it too strongly, but Counselor Lewis and Counselor Bennett were there, and...
We just took a position.
Well, I...
I mean, it's been there for a while.
But it hasn't been communicated to him.
So my question to you is, are you saying that you do want to have the demolition, or go for it, or you don't want to have the demolition?
Well, if I were to do something, I would say I would be in favor, as an act of compromise, I would be in favor of the remediation of the property between Park Street and 23rd Street, with the understanding that in a quid pro quo for that, the city gets the park area, and the Yaquena Hall and the Dome are kept up. And the other thing that Clem, Representative Clem, is talking about is there's a number of items that relate to the neighborhood that the neighborhood group has passed, you know, five or six, seven principles, and it's Representative Clem's view that if, in fact, money can be authorized, some of those principles can be incorporated into the request for proposals that DAS would send out. If no money's authorized, DAS is just going to say, here's the property, do what you want.
Counselor Lewis?
My takeaway from the meeting with Representative Clem was that there has been representation from the city, which we have sent, but what he's looking for now, as we're getting closer to the end of this, is that continued support and possibly even representation from the city as the decisions are made for that funding. That was the one thing. The second thing was, he wanted to make sure at that meeting that the city didn't come in front of the legislature with more than one voice. There are some, this is a repeated story in Salem, that are saying that, of course, there could be, there could be other resolutions to the issue of the North Campus, and there are some that think that they could do this or that with the buildings that are existing there now. And he is concerned that if those folks come in front of the legislature, the legislature will think, well, Salem doesn't even have one story. And so he was basically throwing out the advice that Salem needs to come in front of the legislature and come with one voice.
I guess I'm confused because it was my understanding that staff was in regular communication with a kind of a subcommittee that had been put together with DAS and the Neighborhood Association, and that we were regularly in on the conversations.
And I think that that's true. The staff was represented there. My sense of is that it's, we're getting to crunch time, and the more the city can be involved right now with the legislature, the better.
Counselor Bennett? And then Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with our lobbyist this afternoon before I came over to City Hall, and she is on top of it. She's keeping track of it very closely. I think what we're up against right now is this bill, this issue, is in front of a subcommittee of Ways and Means, and they're going to fund remediation within the next few days. I mean, they will make a decision, and I think what we may want to do is make sure that Casey has a chance to talk with the lobbyist and get you or someone over there talking with the Subcommittee Chair about this. We have had a couple of people who show up over there freelancing from really kind of odd perspectives that don't have much to do with reality, but sound like they may have some expertise in an area they don't. And so we need to probably make sure we get some folks over there that, and I really think, Mayor, maybe having you come over tomorrow or the next day might be the answer.
Okay, Counselor McCoy?
Counselor Bennett just said, well, I was going to say, we need to get our lobbyist in line with whatever the policy is, and make sure they're delivering the message you want delivered.
That'd be good. Counselor Anderson?
That's all good and well, and I appreciate what Counselor Bennett says, but I don't think that we've taken a position on remediation or not remediation, so, you know, we can't do that now unless we...
We have.
Oh, we have, a long time ago.
We did early on.
Yeah, we did. We've been talking about that from the get-go.
But we got to get it, maybe get the message.
Yeah. Because Representative Clem does not know that, and he's going to be one of the people voting on it.
Well, Counselor Benars?
So is there a purpose to the motion at this point? I'm basically asking the maker of the motion, is there a purpose? If the issue is communication of what the city's point of view is, what we've already had as adopted goals?
Well, it's got to be communicated better, and it needs to be communicated quickly. And if we've already got a position, and the position is made, then we ought to do something about it and make sure that the right people know, and if that means having, you know, whatever that triage we had, one through five, then we ought to do something about it.
Okay.
So I will contact our lobbyist tomorrow and work with getting an appointment with either the mayor or an elected official who's able to attend.
So we have a motion on the floor, and that...
Yeah, I'll still, let's go through the whole process. Call the question.
Okay. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Casey, for following up with that, and let me know what I can do to help. All right. And we have another item on the agenda, 10.2B, having to do with local preference amendments to city purchasing rules. And I understand that this is Counselor Benjamin, is that right? All right, Counselor Benjamin?
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a motion to extend for an additional five minutes? I have 10:28 on satellite time.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend for five minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Still thinking nay.
Thank you for the time, folks. My motion, I move to direct staff to amend the city's purchasing rules to provide a preference for the procurement of goods that are fabricated or processed entirely within Salem, Marion or Polk County, the state of Oregon, and/or the United States, in that order of preference, consistent with ORS 279A dot 128. And to require all representative bidders to certify that they will use or provide goods that are fabricated or processed entirely within the United States whenever possible.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
I move to table.
Thank you. All right, I see no further business coming before us, and we are adjourned.